I should like to call this Fairfield City Council meeting to order for November 17th. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Moy, are you there? Councilmember Tim?
Here.
Councilmember Vaccaro, I heard you on the phone.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertani?
Here.
Thank you, and Mayor Price?
Here. We do have a quorum, and before we begin, let me read a statement, please. Due to the anticipated public participation and length of several new business items on tonight's agenda, public comments will be moved to the end of the agenda. If there is no objection by the council, appearing no objection, so ordered. The invocation tonight will be led by worship pastor Jeff Hood from First Baptist Church. Pastor? And would you join me, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag? under God, with all due diligence. Council reports. Councilwoman Moy, would you like to begin, please? Councilmember Tim, please.
Mayor, I pass.
Councilmember Rick Vaccaro?
Yeah, Mayor, yeah, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and please be safe. That's my report.
Vice Mayor Pam Bertani, please. And I should like to report some-
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the meeting, and thank you for tuning in from home. I just want to reiterate Councilmember Vaccaro's Happy Thanksgiving greeting, and that is my report.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Moy, go ahead, please.
Hi. Same thing with me. I just want to say Happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and thank everybody who is out in the audience today and at home watching. And I'm glad to see that people are socially distanced tonight. I've been very concerned about that at our meeting, so I'm glad to see that. Thank you.
And I should like to report that the California Transportation Commission has some good news for all of us in Solano County, as well as those who travel through on Interstate 80. They are going to approve $123 million for the relocation of the westbound truck scales. And that is indeed good news, as well as additional funding for the Managed Lanes project that'll go all the way from the Cartenas Bridge to Dixon. And for those of you who are aware, I had knee surgery, and I want to thank you for your prayers, your thoughts, and good comfort. Mr. City Manager, your report, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, and city councils. A couple of quick things first. Obviously, with the county and honestly, the state reverting back to the most restrictive measure, I think it's Purple is what we're calling that now. We are closely monitoring what that means for us. We do have some information that is coming in. We're working with County Health very closely. Of course, this meeting had been scheduled as an in-person meeting before we were, we reverted back to Purple. So we are implementing those measures which the law allows us to measure, and we're conducting this meeting. It is considered an essential meeting, so it is legal. We're doing the things that we need to mitigate as much as possible the concerns that pandemic brings. We will be strategizing as a senior leadership team tomorrow to determine what measures that we need to take with city operations. Are we going to be placing certain employees on administrative leave during a period of time? Are we gonna restrict or close City Hall, those kinds of things? There's no determination on staff part yet, but we will bring that back to the City Council after we've met tomorrow. We want to be very careful and thoughtful how we go through this process. We know that we need to do our part to help stop this spread and mitigate the spikes in the spread of COVID-19. At the same time, the business of the city needs to go on. So, Mr. Mayor, there'll be more to that coming soon. I'd like to, if I may, turn over a few minutes to our police chief, Chief Cantrell, to read a statement.
Thank you, City Manager, Mr. Mayor, and Council. We've received some correspondence today, and I think City Council members may have received some of the same correspondence, reference the shooting of Mario Romero in Vallejo by an officer that currently works for the Fairfield Police Department. And I, so I just wanted to share a statement, maybe have some clarification for people that have questions about that particular shooting in that officer. Every loss of life is an absolute tragedy, and the loss of Mario Romero is not an exception to that. The shooting of Mario Romero was investigated in 2012 per the Solano County protocol that was in place at the time by the Vallejo Police Department, also by criminal investigators from the Solano County District Attorney's Office, and personnel from the San Mateo County Crime Lab. The Solano County District Attorney's Office reviewed this case and addressed whether or not the case presented a basis for criminal prosecution of the involved officers. That's what the DA's office does. It does not address issues of civil liability, or tactics, or department policy violations. When they made their determination, they made the determination that there was no criminal liability or no criminal wrongdoing. The DA's office is an independent review of that investigation. The DA's office reviewed all evidence in this case, including the officer's statements, statements from numerous witnesses, dispatch records, coroner's findings, crime lab findings, and all other evidence. The DA's office went beyond the criminal investigation, and they sent the case further to the U.S. Department of Justice Civil Rights Division and the U.S. Attorney's Office, Eastern District of California, for independent review in addition to the review they had already conducted. And there is a link, Vallejo, I will be putting out a statement after council tonight that has a link to all of the documents, so people can look at those themselves and see the closure memos and letters from the Department of Justice and the U.S. Attorney's Office. And they did not find wrongdoing either. As to the badge-bending investigation, that was not brought to light prior to Fairfield hiring Officer Joseph in 2018. And I understand that this is concerning to the community, and I want you to know that it is also equally concerning to me. An investigation is being conducted and is following the peace officer bill of rights and due process, and is being conducted by an independent investigative firm through the city of Vallejo. Officer Joseph is not currently working the streets. There's been some, I think, confusion about that. And then there were questions about our hiring process, so I just want to share some of that with you, maybe shed some light on what that looks like. Background investigations for police officers have to be conducted according to the California Peace Officer Standards and Training, and the history of a peace officer applicant has to be thoroughly investigated to make sure that the applicant is of good moral character, and that nothing in his or her background is inconsistent with performing peace officer duties. The background investigation is also conducted to ensure that the applicant meets the minimum selection requirements that are outlined in the government code and the commission regulation. So background investigations include in-depth interviews of the applicant, prior employers, neighbors, family members, an in-depth review of employment records, social media history, education, and certification verifications. There's also a physical fitness exam, a medical exam, and a psychological exam, and a polygraph. The Fairfield Police Department has a very robust process to ensure that the high standards of the peace officer standards and training are met, and the background investigations for an officer typically take about five to eight weeks to conduct and are reviewed and examined thoroughly by several experienced investigators, as well as the command team and myself. The department works with experienced polygraphers and psychologists to ensure the accuracy and reliability of the polygraph and the psychological screening. Personal social media that's available for public viewing by law is evaluated for any indicators of bias or anything that would conflict with the city's values. The Fairfield Police Department is also audited annually by post to ensure that we're following all of the peace officer standards and training standards. So hopefully, that will answer a few questions. It certainly answers the questions that have been asked via email that I've seen. So we'll put this statement out and put a link to some of these documents so that people can view them themselves after council.
Chief, I don't know if you can hear me, but thank you very much for that report, and welcome to the city of Fairfield. Mr. City Attorney, your report, please. Mr. Mayor, no reports tonight.
I don't have a report either. Thank you.
And I will, at this point, convene the meeting of the Successor Agency to the Fairfield Redevelopment Agency. And we have just one item, and that's the Successor Agency Consent Calendar. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Councilman Tim, is there a second, please? I will second that motion. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, you need to do a roll call since we have folks on the phone.
Member Moy?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Member Tim?
Yes.
Member Vaccaro?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bertani?
Aye.
And Chairman Price?
Aye.
Motion?
Yes. Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, if I may remind those at home, if you would turn down the volume of your TV so that we don't get any feedback.
And I will now convene the meeting of the Housing Authority.
Okay, and I need to read a statement. The holding of a joint meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority entitles the council members to receive additional compensation of $35 for attending this joint meeting. And should I take one?
And roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Member Moy? Or Commissioner Moy? Commissioner Tim?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaccaro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bertani?
Yes.
And Chairman Price?
Here. Entertained a motion then to approve the consent calendar as submitted. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Been moved by Councilman Tim. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Take your role. Commissioner Moy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tim?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaccaro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bertani?
Yes.
Yes. And we turn now to the public hearing. If you would read that resolution, please, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Housing Authority Public Hearing and Resolution HA 2020-08 of the Fairfield Housing Authority approving the Fairfield Housing Authority Public Housing Agency Plan and Administrative Plan for Fiscal Year 2020-2021. And our speaker is Latan or Nicole? Okay, Latan. Thank you, sorry.
And I will open the public hearing.
This evening, we are opening up the public hearing for consideration of Fairfield Housing Authority 2020, 2021, and then these documents set forth the goals and annual operating policies governing the Housing Authority's operations. Most provisions of the operating documents remain the same. However, notable changes have been made in the following areas. One, there was an increase in the payment standards in the average amount of 2% over the last year. It should be noted that HUD recommends that housing authorities consistently modify its payment standards when they submit changes to the fair market rents. This assures that housing authority payment standards are consistent with the market and maximized to provide the greatest utility of the Section 8 vouchers to recipients of the program. HUD allows housing authorities to set their payment standards up to 110% of the fair market rent. This is particularly beneficial for Fairfield in that rental rates in the city tend to be at the higher end of the market. Our voucher rates are therefore competitive, increasing the chances for our voucher holders to have a larger array of properties to obtain housing. Secondly, more leniency regarding criminal record screening policies was indicated in the plans. We went from a five-year to a three-year lookback to assure greater housing opportunities to Fairfield citizens. This will allow the housing authority to have a more fair and inclusive process with voucher applicants. We will monitor voucher applicants and recipients for arrests, but we will be more lenient with them who have less egregious arrests or convictions. And thirdly, allowances for the housing authority to perform remote reviews and hearings. This allows business transactions to continue without putting staff and diseases. Overall, the updates to the annual plan and administrative plan expands opportunities for assistance and further refines policies to be more adaptable to circumsval community. Our plan was reviewed by legal services of Northern California, and they have provided their written endorsement of our plan document. Thank you.
Any comments or questions, colleagues? Go forward.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just tapped.
Councilwoman Moy, please.
Thank you. I was wondering if you could be more specific about the, what you call less egregious offenses for public housing, averaging from five to two years. What specifically do you mean by that?
Essentially, when a person actually applies for Section 8 voucher, we will do a criminal background check. Before, we were looking back five years for that criminal background check. Now HUD has issued new policies that will allow us to be able to only look back three years. That way, it allows more people to actually be able to receive Section 8 vouchers. And with regard to egregious acts, if there was someone that was a sex offender, then, and they were convicted for sex, for that particular act, then that person would more than likely not be able to be accepted onto the program. However, if someone maybe had a DUI, or maybe they robbed a store, then we would actually work with that particular person or household in order to be able to get a greater understanding of the conditions surrounding that particular action, and then make a decision to either accept them in the program or not. But we would definitely hear them out and not make an automatic no decision with regard to their acceptance in the program.
Well, that's good. I mean, I like the idea that you look at it on an individual basis instead of just a wide swath of not allowing people in. But I, who makes the, who makes the decision on that? And do you allow, for instance, if somebody's committed a rape or an armed robbery, does that fall into something that they could still get housing inside Fairfield?
Yes, that's a scenario where we would actually look and review, review that particular file, and then that specialist will make a recommendation to management, and then management will review that file. They may more than likely call in the actual household to make sure that they understand the actual, his particular case, and then a decision of that applicant being accepted or not will be made.
Okay. And, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. And then just one last question. Were we having a hard time finding people for Section 8, or why the, why the changes? Because it seems to me that there was always a waiting lesson, that there weren't problems getting people to sell the vouchers.
Yes, there was no problem in terms of trying to find people, but HUD is looking for housing authorities around the country to be more accepting, because some people's scenarios or situations, they may have made a mistake, and we don't want to automatically exclude them from the program as a result of that. So HUD actually went back and tried to modify some of their policies and make them less rigid so that we can have more inclusion onto the program.
Yeah, okay, well, I understand that. Like I said, I, I think it's good that we take it by a, you know, person by person instead of, again, just saying that this group of people can't. I do have concerns with people, you know, who have, like you said, sex offenses or offenses on children if they're moving in an area with children. So I'm glad that we're looking at that, and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Any other comments? We'll close the public hearing and bring it back for council action. Motion to approve Housing Authority Resolution 2020-08?
So moved.
Been moved by Councilman Tim. Seconded by? I will second it.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Moy. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Moy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tim?
Yes.
Commissioner Vaccaro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bertani?
Yes.
And Chairman Price?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. And apologies, we have two presentations, and I jumped over those, so we'll go back to the presentation with Levin and Mark Lilis, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, City Manager, State Attorney, members of the audience, Mark Lilis, Executive Director of Levin, and very pleased to be in front of you to give you a quick update, but also to tell you a fantastic story of students and children that have been resilient and have been working very, very hard in some challenging, challenging environments. So you'll just bear with me for a moment, I'll turn on this presentation. So the stars of our show, as we like to say, are truly the children. And I want to highlight one of our students who has really overcome some challenges and some really extraordinary circumstances in this environment to find ourselves. So you'll watch the screens, I'll hit the video. And then our Operations Director, Renee Cadlock, coming up to this fantastic. Also wanted just to highlight, we have some students from, we have six locations, after-school tutoring and mentoring locations in Citi of Fairfield, and we have students from two of those locations that are with us tonight, from the Groves, which is 855 East Tabor, and then also, and then also from Dana Drive, which is just right across the street from North Bay. And joining us as their great Site Directors, Sandy Lawler and also Vicki Dawson. So thank you so much for having the kids come on out, and we'll show this quick.
Hello, my name is Vicki Dawson, and I am the interim Site Director for the Dana Drive Site, and I'm also the Community Outreach Director. And today, I'm here with Atsiri, who is a student at our Dana Drive Site, and we are distance, we are socially distanced, and we want to share a story with you about some successes that Atsiri has had. So Atsiri, the Dana Drive Site opened about three weeks ago, and when you first came here, how many homework assignments were you behind?
Forty-six.
Forty-six? Oh, my goodness, that's so much. How in the world did you get caught up? What did you do to get caught up?
By Shane that you live in and home.
Okay, so let's break that down a little bit more. So you came to the site, and the volunteers here at the site helped you? Yes, and then who is, who is Mr. Shane? What is-
It's a teacher that connects with me in my Chromebook I connect and present my screen.
Okay, so he's your virtual volunteer, and you share your screen, and he helps you with your homework? And then what did you have to do to get the rest of the way?
And here, they help me do my homework, and at home, I don't do like three, I do like 11 or 10.
Right, you do more at home, and then you come in and finish the rest here. And you're, you're all, you're pretty much all caught up now, right?
Right.
Right, okay, very good.
Good evening, and I'm so excited to have Atsiri with us this evening, as well as some of our other friends, and we're so proud of all of her efforts, as well as the efforts of all the children that we're being able to continue to support and serve during the current pandemic. And distance learning has posed some unique set of circumstances for our friends, and so with COVID-19 as well, we've adapted, and we have protocols in place, and we have in-person options as well as virtual options. And so we're so thankful for a community that continues to believe in us, believes in our children, and we want to see them continue to rise, so thank you. Atsiri, you want to wave? She's back here behind the podium.
Thank you so much, Atsiri. Thank you so much, Renee. So Levin began, started with a dream right here in Citi of Fairfield, 2009. Many of you remember coming and hearing President Chris Gray from Parkway Church, who approached you all to start a tutoring center in the Pace neighborhood. And that was sort of how things began. We converted an apartment complex into, or an apartment unit into a tutoring center. As I like to say, it was sold out for the very first, very first day. You'll see some, some familiar faces there, including Don LaBarre and Councilmember Tim and Mayor, as well as Jim Sparing, that were there on the porch of that, that first, that first center. We launched our second center at the Groves, which is 855 East Tabor, and then quickly spread over to Phoenix Drive, Grande Circle, Parkway Gardens, Tabor Avenue at Signature, and then Dana Drive. So we have those centers that we are currently serving in the city of Fairfield. And it only takes a spark. We did whatever we could to help kids and communities rise. The real vision that I think Sean Quinn had and members that started was, hey, we want to have a neighborhood revitalization program and really help improve and transform neighbors, neighborhoods for the better, one child at a time. So that's been sort of our, our goal of what we've been trying to do as we go along the way. And we have a lot of different types of ways in which we do this. After-school tutoring and mentoring occurs every single day, in which kids get help with their homework, and we're doing that right now in a virtual, kind of a blended situation. We have another program that we do Farm to Families, which is Healthy Eating, Active Living, to really help give kids and to give parents some recipes and other things in which to make nutritious meals and to show the importance of nutrition that we partner with Kaiseron. We also do financial literacy, which is a partnership with Travis Credit Union, which we've been able to provide different types of ways in which to build a budget, how to handle money. STEM and STEAM is exceptionally important, to learn the skills for today that are going to help in the workplace tomorrow. You've seen Herm Roland certainly at Jelly Belly, working with robotics. But then there's also a whole bunch of other manufacturers who are working with robotics, coding, drone, Travis Air Force Base certainly, it's not lost on us, uses this type of technology. So if students would like to get into any of those areas, they can do that by learning things in our STEM STEAM Center, such as, such as robotics, such as coding, such as 3D printing, those types of activities. So we have about six STEM STEAM Centers that are just designated for these types of activities, and they've just been fantastic. And then relationship building, been so important with our first responders, our police and our fire department, our military, Travis Air Force Base, been really important to have those types of mentoring relationships, students start off at a very early age. of mentoring relationships. Students started off at a very early age, and our police officers have been just fantastic, and firefighters who come and to read with the kids and to show them just the care of their community. So good news travels fast, as you know. Today, we're in four Solano County cities in Vacaville, Vallejo, Susoon. We're also in the city of Napa, Concord, Sacramento. And down south, we're in two, in the city of Ontario and Rialto. So we have expansion plans in each of the cities that we're in. They want to have more centers, as I think most of the communities that we're in, because quite honestly, the site directors have just been fantastic work. And so that and good news has traveled very, very quickly. And we've met some great people along the way, that's for sure. We have a fantastic board of directors, the Honorable Mike Nail, the former Superior Court Judge, and District Attorney is our board president. We also have a new honorary position that we've opened up, and Dr. Rick Rigsby, who's a national and international speaker from Vallejo, California, but now he lives in Texas, has joined that board. Many of you have heard him speak. If you haven't heard him speak, go look at Dr. Rick Rigsby, great, great individual. And then the former four-star for Air Mobility Command, General Mary Ann Miller, has joined also our honorary board. So we're very delighted to have these two national figures join us in finding out ways in which we can further help more students and communities grow. And of course, one would never forget this scene, which is with Dr. Phil, as he is one of our supporters and sponsors as well. And many of you have been down to Los Angeles to go meet with Dr. Phil, to be on his grand stage. And we're very, very thankful for Dr. Phil, just supporting us, wanting to hear how he can help and being a part. So the results, they've been fantastic. Twenty-six centers, 500 children served, 4,000 children served altogether. We have improved literacy and math skills, exhibits higher self-esteem with students. But I think what really touches me is a couple of things. One is that being from the city of Fairfield, born and raised here, to see something really good happening in this town, making a difference, not just in Fairfield, but throughout the fruited plain, and I think throughout our nation. And then secondly, is to hear stories of how our students have just overcome. There's been a lot of challenge, that's for sure. Been a lot to overcome. But they have really worked hard, and they are doing more than just survival, I will tell you. They are thriving. And when they get back into the classroom, they are going to do, continue to do great things. They'll be right up to speed. So members of council, Mayor, thank you so much for hearing this presentation. Thank you so much for all your great support. Thank you so much for having an idea that came to you in 2009 and saying, hey, you know what, during the Great Recession, which nothing was happening, you decided to say, hey, you know what, we need to invest in the lives of our children. You planted some seeds, and we're all enjoying the shade. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And thank you, Levin kids. We're so very, very proud of you. And our next presentation will be done by Councilman Chuck Tim, and this is a particularly patriotic one, so you'll want to listen carefully to this one, please. Chuck Tim?
Mayor, thank you. Levin's come a long way, and they've done a good job. I have a proclamation from the mayor, and I had the honor to actually deliver it last Wednesday on Veterans Day at Paradise Valley Estates. And it's to Robert "Bob" Dittmer. And we made it Bob. One-hundredth birthday was actually November 11, 2020. And through the mayor's office, we gave him the proclamation, but it was, when I read it, things I didn't know, but gentleman is still here, he's 100, he's still with his wife, and she's just a little older. And what a sweetheart couple. And it made it very poignant on Veterans Day to present this. So without further ado, I'm going to read it. It says, "Whereas Robert Dittmer was born on November 11, 2020, in Fairfield, California, grew up on the Dittmer Ranch, which is out by Costco, purchased by his grandfather in 1881, and operated today by Robert as a fifth generation. And whereas Robert attended Green Valley Grammar School and Army High School, and worked at Mare Island prior to the war. And whereas Robert served in the Eighth Air Force during World War II as a lieutenant on a B-17 as a navigator bombardier. And whereas after the war, Robert attended Washington State University and worked at the Fairfield-Susun Air Base. And whereas Robert also served in the Korean War and was on duty as Assistant Fire Chief on August 5, 1950, when General Robert F. Travis's aircraft crashed and burned. General Travis, of course, was killed, but Robert was severely burned as he attempted to enter the aircraft to rescue military personnel still onboard. The explosion created by bombs that were on the aircraft caused extensive damage, breaking plate glass door windows far away as Susun City. Whereas Robert and his partner owned and operated Fairfield Glass Company in Fairfield and Vacaville Glass Company in Vacaville for more than 29 years, they were active in the downtown merchants and miscellaneous civic affairs organizations, and he was a member of the Kiwanis International for more than 50 years. Whereas Robert met his lovely wife Lois on base, they were married in 1951, they have two children and four grandchildren. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Harry T. Price, bear the city of Fairfield, commend Robert "Bob" Dittmer for his amazing longevity and zest for life, and hereby proclaim November 11, 2020, to be Robert "Bob" Dittmer Day in Fairfield, and express my heartfelt wishes for a very happy one-hundredth birthday." And he stood there and listened as I presented this to him. And like I said, it's what Veterans Day was about, and to be 100 years old, I was very touched to give it to him. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Tim. That was well done. Convene now the meeting of the Paradise Valley Maintenance and Monitoring District.
All members, all matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the PV MMD or the public requests that a separate action be taken on a specific item.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Tim. Is there a second to that motion, please?
And I'll take a role. Thank you, Rick. Member Moi?
Yes.
Member Tim?
Yes.
Member Vaccaro?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bertani? And Chairman Price?
Motion carries unanimously.
And I do want to say, on the consent calendar, I do have two people wishing to speak on item seven, the first item on the consent.
One, two, three, four. Let the people take the floor. Five, six, seven, eight. Let the people take the day. One, two, three, four. Let the people take the floor. Five, six, seven, eight. Let the people take the day. One, two, three, four. Let the people take the floor. Five, six, seven, eight. Let the people take the day. One, two, three, four.
Here is this.
Five, six, seven, eight. Let the people take the day. Let the people want to hear. Move the lady from the field.
Thank you very much. That was extraordinary, but totally unacceptable.
Let the people want to hear. Move the lady from the field.
You will be removed.
Reconvene this Fairfield City Council meeting.
There we go.
And we'll be on the consent calendar, item number seven. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak, cards?
Not on consent. There was an error. I thought that we had two on number seven, but they want to speak on number 25. Somebody wrote the number down wrong.
Number 25.
So, Mr. Mayor, now that we've reconvened, we might want to make sure that we've got the council back on phone and that they're able to hear us and respond.
Council, are you online with us again?
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions, colleagues, on any of the items on the consent calendar?
Thank you very much.
Hearing none, entertain a motion then to approve the consent calendar as submitted.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, please. Are you making a motion to approve the consent calendar as submitted?
No, I'm making a comment and asking a question about what just happened in the city council meeting. Because those of us at home were not privy to what happened. So, my first question is, was anyone arrested?
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council. What took place here was that the council did recess and the people who were speaking, were allowed to speak for a certain amount of time, they were asked to leave. And at that point, they were removed ultimately from the council chambers.
Any other comments or questions?
Was anyone arrested?
Was anyone arrested?
Any other comments or questions?
Was anyone arrested?
Chief, can you tell us, was anybody arrested? Whoever's on the phone, can you guys turn your TV down, please?
Chief Cantrell, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, they were all arrested.
I don't know if you can hear that, colleagues, but they were all arrested.
Good, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Chief, this is Pam Bertani. Can you please step back to the mic? Chief, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Why were these people arrested?
Because it is unlawful for them to interrupt a council meeting. They were given many opportunities to leave peacefully and chose not to.
Well, I can't really hear you because I have to mute my phone, so let me turn up my TV. I can't really hear you because I have to mute my phone, so let me turn up my TV.
This is City Manager Stefan Chatwin. Are you able to unmute your phone and mute your TV? That way, you're listening to us through your phone rather than through your television set. Are you able to hear us through your phone instead of through the TV?
Yes, I have muted my TV and I am on my phone.
Okay, and you can hear us okay on your phone?
I can hear you great.
Perfect, thank you. Go ahead now.
Thank you, Stefan. So, my question was, why were these people arrested?
And Chief, if you'd like, I can answer that. It might be easier for you to hear me. They were allowed to speak for a bit. After we allowed them some time to speak, we asked them to please leave and exit. Lawfully, that's a lawful order. They refused to. Because of that refusal, they were then removed. They were arrested and removed that way. They were given every opportunity to leave on their own. They refused to leave on their own. They refused to allow the meeting to continue. And so, with that, the direction was given by me to the police chief to go ahead and remove them by arresting them. So, I can certainly give an accounting to the council at some point in the future on that, but that was the direction that I gave our police chief.
Well, I think it is very unfortunate that these folks were arrested, and I think it's a bad look. And that's what I have to say, and I'm going to mute my phone right now.
Thank you. So, council will come back to the consent calendar? Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as submitted, please?
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Tim. Is there a second, please?
Second.
And Councilman Vicaro, seconded. All in favor, roll call vote, please. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Vicaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bertani?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
And now, we're on new business, item 22, Urgency Ordinance. 2020-19 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield implementing a program to allow temporary shelter services to be provided at existing churches or other places of worship and at other existing assembly uses subject to conditions. And our presenter is Don Labarre from the City Manager's Office.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Don Labarre, City Manager's Office, Homeless Services Division. So, at your direction, the Homeless Services Division and several other departments within the city have been looking for opportunities and options to create additional shelter opportunities for our homeless here in Fairfield. We wanted to create opportunities for our community partners who are always willing to step up and be part of that solution in serving our homeless. We also wanted to, as we've mentioned many times, move into a more proactive position rather than being reactive. And we wanted to also create some oversight that protects our homeless and also minimizes on the surrounding community. So, our Quality of Life Task Force formed a subcommittee to work on just that and look at opportunities that would create a program. We work very closely with Attorney's Office. Thank you, Greg and Casey, for all of your assistance on that. So, tonight, we're before you to discuss the creation of a temporary shelter program. And that also means modifying our municipal codes through an urgency ordinance. And the urgency ordinance, of course, is because of the, again, the emergency sheltering ordinance, or excuse me, the shelter, excuse me, I'm a little rattled still, the emergency sheltering and shelter in place that has been established through the state and our immediate need to look for solutions. So, what we are proposing is to add 5A to the municipal code, and this creates the temporary shelter program to the Fairfield Municipal Code. And this establishes that program, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. And it also amends Chapter 25, Article 1, and this would allow temporary shelters as an ancillary use at existing religious or assembly use facilities. And this obviously really plays into our great partnerships that we have with our local churches. And it defines temporary shelter, and again, think of this completely separate as where we have our emergency shelters. This is a completely separate type of use. So, this would allow for temporary shelters, which we currently do not allow within the city. And this defines temporary shelters as facilities, buildings, or rooms that provides short-term shelter to those experiencing homelessness. And this, we say short-term because we already have the available uses of emergency shelters. And the temporary shelter program, it addresses, through this new establishment of 5A, this establishes and addresses the locations where they are able to function. It addresses the concentration, the operation, and safety standards for these new ancillary temporary shelters, and I'll talk about that more in a minute. And it also requires now for a temporary shelter permit to be established, and that will be coordinated through the Homeless Services Division, but it will also be coordinated with several other departments. And we'll talk about that more, why, and you'll understand that. And then, that permit term will be for one year, but it can be renewed. So, let me talk a little bit about the program. This is a free permit process. What we want to make sure we're doing is that we're not creating barriers, but we're eliminating those barriers. So, we want, again, work with our partners, and I want to thank John Takayuchi, who's here this afternoon or this evening, for bringing up really thoughtful feedback. The feedback really helps us make sure that we are filling in those gaps and making sure we're hitting those glitches. So, we want to make sure that we're eliminating those barriers to engaging with our community partners such as our churches. So, this would be a free permit process that would be led through the Homeless Services Division. But we really want to make sure that it is minimizing the impacts on the surrounding community, but also really making sure that there is a life and safety component that really is protecting our homeless in those overnight settings. So, the permit review will be, it will be required that we work with the other departments. And these were the other members through the Quality of Life Task Force that really worked with us very closely to make sure, what is it that we want to make sure that we're looking at? We want to make sure that they are getting the zoning review, that we are looking at code enforcement and impacts on the community, that we're looking at building safety, particularly building safety and fire safety. So, our fire marshal and our chief building official will have to be engaged in that process. And then, like I said, the code enforcement to look at, you know, are there code compliance issues? Really wanting to make sure that the community is minimally impacted. And then, there are key requirements for that. We want to make sure that there isn't a heavy density on that, so there will be a thousand-foot minimum separation between operations. We want to make sure that there are no more than nine participants in each of those operations, and that, again, is a life and safety component. We want to, and part of that minimizing the impacts is that we minimize the operation for, since it is a temporary shelter, that it operates for no more than a six-month timeframe throughout that year, and that can be concurrent or it can be throughout the year, and we'll work with them on that. And then, absolutely have to have that life and safety inspection done by the building, the chief building official and the fire marshal. And one thing that was really important, we wanted to make sure that we had community participation. We held a meeting in July with the help of our crime prevention and code enforcement team. We held a meeting in July over in the Cordelia area and gauged with probably about 50 residents and businesses to seek input on what sort of impacts they were feeling there. We wanted to make sure that we were minimizing those. We also conducted several surveys throughout September of our service providers, our community residents and businesses. And also, we did direct surveys with our homeless over a two-day period through our high-impact areas throughout Fairfield. We posted a public hearing notice in October, and then, the feedback that we got from the community, again, we wanted to make sure that there were minimal impacts, that we limited the number of participants, and this, again, was a really important note for both our building official and the fire marshal, and that we had really a strong communication between the different departments, which there's always good intentions, but we always want to make sure that we're all communicating, and that we want to make sure that these temporary shelters are tied to that more full continuum that we've talked about before so that we're working to get them more connected to those more supportive services, including that permanent housing. So, what I'm asking for this evening is that you adopt the Urgency Ordinance number 2020-19, implementing the program to allow the temporary shelter services to be provided at existing churches or other places of worship and at other existing assembly uses subject to conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Labarre. Council colleagues, any comments or questions for Ms. Labarre before we take action? Sounds like an excellent plan. Entertain a motion then to approve Urgency Ordinance 2020-119. May I just want to make sure there's no other speakers on this item? Are there any speakers on this item?
I don't think so, but I have seven cards that didn't indicate what agenda item they wanted to speak on.
You can just ask the audience if there's any speakers.
Any one of the audience? Any one of the audience wanting to speak on this item, please come forward and identify yourself.
What's your name?
Thank you, Ms. Labarre, for your presentation. I guess, and I don't know if this is the appropriate form to ask questions, but is there a sample of the survey that was given to the healthless community during the preliminary review of needs and the assessment for the public to view?
I don't have a sample of that with me this evening, but I'm happy to mail it to you. I can give you my card. And if you give me your contact information, I'm happy to mail it to you.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. And I guess my other question is going back to the differentiation between temporary and emergency shelter needed for the healthless community here in Fairfield. You made it distinguish between the attempt to provide a more long-term solution for these individuals opposed to a one-night type of shelter. But you did mention at the beginning that there is an emergency type of program. What program is that for clarification? What would that be categorized under? Some are emergency, like I'm a mom. I'm here. I lost my job. And now I have three kids and myself that are going to be out on the streets, and I don't know what to do.
So we do have, in Fairfield, we do have an emergency shelter at 310 Beck. In fact, we have the shelter operator here with us this evening. We also have several transitional housing programs throughout Fairfield and our Coordinated Entry System that works to identify those locations. So depending on the location of the family or the need and their available resources, they could be placed here in Fairfield or other locations. So it's, so this, what we're looking at tonight is not the full solution. It would just be one piece. And our hope is that this will just help build on that continuum. We also, of course, have the Bay North COVID Project that we're currently operating through the end of the year that we hope to extend. But that is more focused on high-risk, high-risk homeless that, you know, are more high at risk for COVID.
Perfect. Thank you for that. And my last question is in reference to the Chief General Physician for Solano County and for Fairfield area. What is the feedback in reference to, now that we've entered into the purple category for COVID? What differentiations and changes is your team or the team that's working on these projects putting in place to really be thoughtful around the expansion and the risk to the community as it relates to COVID and the spread and providing masks and things that are needed for these particular individuals that may not have the means to purchase them?
Are you, are you talking specifically for homeless or the community in general?
I mean, well, I guess because this presentation's geared towards the healthless community, I'm going to focus in on homeless, but maybe even low income. But I'm going to first start with the healthless community as it relates to prevention of the spread of COVID to the rest of the community and to their community as they're part of our community.
So Fairfield has been actively engaged with Project Room Key since April of this year and is continuing to support that project. We're looking to potentially even expand it with additional funding from the state, depending on if that funding continues to come down through the local jurisdictions. And of course, we mentioned the COVID project with Bay North Church, which is specific for our high-risk homeless. And we have done at least two PPE distributions for masks of well over 5,000 masks that we have distributed to our low-income and vulnerable families and individuals here in the community. And we have been able to use coronavirus relief funds to purchase those masks. And we've also been able to give those out when we are out doing outreach to our homeless families and individuals. And we have plenty and, you know, you know, anytime we know that there are people that need those, we want to make sure that we get them to them.
Okay, perfect. And do the first responders have supplies just in case? Or who's distributing these PPE supplies to these individuals?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear what you said.
Do the first responders have supplies? Or who's distributing these PPE supplies of mask gloves and sanitation products?
I don't, I don't want to speak for the first responders, so I would-
City Manager.
They can get them, yeah. If they see folks that need them, they, we have those available for them to distribute.
And I know many business owners, from their business perspective, are supplying them out of their, I guess, revenues and gross income as well.
Yeah, in fact, Mayor Price was able to get probably over 5,000 donated to us by CCN. And we were able to get those to our churches, who also do a lot of outreach with our homeless. So we've had a lot of really great community support in making sure that we're able to get those to those who need them.
Absolutely. We want to make sure-
And I still have many of those masks readily available.
Yeah, absolutely. We just want to make sure, from a community perspective, that as citizens, we're knowledgeable on how we can help as well, have a positive impact to these individuals as they're part of our community. And so that's where my questioning comes back. And then just in reflection back to the beginning of the pandemic and the processes the city followed with that, I hope that there are some learnings that, as we're approaching December, we're already into the flu season right now. So I just hope that the city and City Council and Chief Physician are being mindful to that as it relates to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go.
Mayor, the action would be a motion to waive further reading and to adopt the ordinance, urgency ordinance.
So moved. Been moved by Councilman Tim. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Vicaro? Vice Mayor Bertani?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. We turn then to item number 23, please, Madam Clerk.
Item 23, Resolution 2020-219 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving a consultant services agreement between the City of Fairfield and Diet and Batia to prepare a general plan, housing element update, environmental impact report, and climate action plan for the general plan update project. And our presenter is Senior Planner Amy Krymeier.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. So today, I'm presenting on contract for the general plan update. Every city in California is required to prepare and adopt a comprehensive, long-term general plan for the development of the city. Fairfield last completed their general plan in 1992. So it's time. And the council identified this as a priority project at its retreat in 2019 and began allocating funding for the project. So on June 24, 2020, we released a request for qualifications to solicit proposals from qualified planning firms. And following the receival of several proposals, the city then conducted interviews and requested scope of work proposals from four qualified firms, ultimately deciding upon the firm Diet and Batia. They are a highly qualified, award-winning firm with excellent references and a great team of experts and subconsultants with experience, extensive experience in the area. The total cost of the contract is $1,755,255. It was not the cheapest, but not the most expensive either. And robust, everything that we wanted and wanted to see as part of this update project. The resolution before you tonight does include a 15% contingency with a do-not-exceed amount of $2,18,543. The scope of work includes the general plan update as well as the housing element update. Generally, the housing element is done on an eight-year cycle. And we are fortunate that that cycle aligns with this general plan update. And so we were able to incorporate that into this update. And it also includes the climate action plan, extensive public outreach and community engagement, the environmental impact report, among other items. I would also like to note that the city is the recipient of a $100,000 leap grant for the preparation of the housing element. So essentially bringing the contract cost down for the city to 1.6 million. So some highlights of the schedule. This is proposed to begin in December of this year with the first, at the council study session in January, we anticipate to bring this before you and do a deep dive into it. And the schedule has the process completed in two years by November 2022. Outreach will begin this winter and continue throughout the entire process with alternatives evaluations in spring, bringing forth a preferred plan by January of 2022, have drafts for review by summer of '22, and again, adoption in November. So it's a quick process, but it's set up. It's going to give us everything we need. And so with that, staff is recommending that the council adopt Resolution 2020-219 to enter into a contract with Diet and Batia for the general plan update project.
Any comments or questions of Amy, colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is-
Councilwoman Moy, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yes, so how many different organizations did we research to come up with this? And does anybody on staff have any kind of experience with this group?
What was the first part of your question?
How many different organizations did we look at to come up with this?
So how many bid on this? How many, how many contractors bid on this project?
We received four scope of work proposals.
That's four?
Mm-hmm, and interviewed four. And so we have worked with Diet and Batia in the past. They began our train station-specific plan before it eventually moved to a different firm through no fault of Diet and Batia's. And they also have extensive experience in the area, Napa, and other cities within the Bay Area.
Okay, when you said we have, is that just the planning department has worked with them before?
The city, I would say, as well as the planning department.
Okay. I just, it's a lot, it's a lot of tax money that we're spending. And make sure that we're all satisfied with that because this is a big, big undertaking, obviously, for all of us and a big investment. And we're going to rely on these documents for a long time. So I just want to make sure that we're getting it exactly right. So thank you.
Yeah, and Councilmember Moy, thank you. And I would echo what's, what's been said. They've been screened pretty thoroughly. And we feel very comfortable with the recommendation to the City Council on who's been, we've selected, who we recommend that you, you enter into a contract with. It is a lot of money. Unfortunately, these general plans do cost a lot of money. I wish they were cheaper, but with a city of our size and the requirements here in California under that general plan, there's a lot of elements there, a lot of things that need to be covered. We have to get it right to be compliant. And these folks have experience doing it. So we feel comfortable with the recommendation, obviously.
Councilman Tim?
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, I actually was impressed with the, with the price because I thought it was going to be probably closer to 3 million. But to remind everybody, we've been talking about the general plan. And if you remember, last month, we put a moratorium on any annexations. We talked about the general plan. And we weren't going to do anything until this got finished. And you can see, it's a, it's a two-year project. So Amy, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Amy, I appreciate your presentation, too. Very succinct, and you were very responsive to the questions that came before us. So, but I remember years ago, when the last general plan acquired, to talk about how soon we could get started on the new one. And it has taken all these years, but now we're ready to begin. So unless there are other comments by my colleagues, entertain a motion then to approve Resolution 2020-219. So moved. Been moved by Councilwoman Vicaro. Seconded by? I'll second it.
Second.
Okay, good. Thank you, Councilwoman Moy. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
Yes.
Councilmember Vicaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Bertani?
Yes.
And Mayor Price?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 24, please, Madam Clerk.
Item 24, Heart of Fairfield Proposed Development Strategy for 421 Madison Street, former Semieto school site. And our presenter is David Gassaway, Assistant City Manager.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. This is Councilwoman Moy.
Go ahead.
I just need to find out from the city attorney whether I need to recuse on this.
This is only a presentation without action. Also, Councilwoman Moy, is your property located though within 500 feet of, of this particular site?
Not 500 feet, no, but it's in downtown.
Yeah, so you're fine.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, David Gassaway, Assistant City Manager, overseeing community and economic development. It's my pleasure to present to you a concept for starting to see development happen in the Heart of Fairfield, specifically downtown, at the former Semieto school site. Really what tonight is about is presenting you with an overview of, and intent to introduce a new opportunity and somewhat a new creative way for us to position ourselves to see development happen downtown. We'll, we'll cover some of the front-end analysis we've done on this project, cover some of the possible roles then that the city can play in seeing development come forward on the site, as well as a quick overview on timing and next steps and expectations. So to orient everybody, this site, as I mentioned, is the former Semieto school site. It's a 2.2-acre site that is owned by the city. It's bordered on the north by Delaware, on the south by Broadway, on the east by Madison, and on the west by Taylor Streets. The site is Zoned HR Residential, which in the Heart of Fairfield specific plan allows for up to 35 units per acre. Previously, the city staff, I think two years ago, had done an analysis on this site and a potential development that really pushed the limits of what that density could be on the site. And ultimately, when we put the economics behind it, we found that the top end of the density really wasn't financially feasible on this site because of some constraints on it. So we went back to the drawing board a little bit and worked with an architecture firm that did some of the preliminary work to do some rough line-outs of a townhome concept. And what they were able to really put onto the site comfortably was a 44-unit townhouse project, which would be consistent of 16 two-bedroom units at 1,000 square feet, 12 three-bedroom units at 1,860 square feet, and 16 three-bedroom units plus a den at 1,940 square feet. All of those units then would have an attached garage, a one-car garage for the two-bedroom units and a two-car garage for the three-bedroom units. Ultimately, this project is planned to be for sale. The layout of the property provides good visibility from all sides. It would be composed of eight buildings that are all three stories in height. The overall parking onsite and offsite meets our standards under the Heart of Fairfield plan. And in fact, one of the things that we looked to incorporate in this project was one of the concepts that's raised in the Heart of Fairfield plan, which if you look along the bottom edge there of the diagram, shows back-end angle parking. And that is a concept down Broadway that was introduced in order to increase parking availability along Broadway within the Heart of Fairfield plan. And so that has been incorporated. The site also has- The site also has lots of open space, green lawns, would have a totlot for children's play, barbecue, and picnic areas to really enhance the quality of the project. After doing the site design preliminary work, we worked with a firm called Novogradic that specializes in doing some of the underlying economic analysis of these types of projects. And what they found when they did the market study very specifically was that within the broader housing market for units of this size, they, they found that there are somewhere in the neighborhood of 26,000 qualified households within the broader market. And when we look at those 26,000 households and a 44-unit development such as this, that represents about 2% of those 26,000, which in their opinion, their professional opinion, makes this project highly feasible. They backed into some per-unit pricing and then compared that to other comparable units that are for sale on the market and set market valuations in the range of $350,000 for the two-bedroom units, $480,000 for the smaller of the three-bedroom units, and $490,000 for the larger of the three-bedroom units. Now, in reviewing this project, we also kept an eye towards affordability. What we're, what we were really trying to do here with this project is, is look at a way to do market rate for-sale housing and still provide some opportunity for affordability. And in doing that, what the consultants did was they looked at those overall unit values that I just showed you, and then utilizing area median income at different levels and different family sizes, they backed into what some sort of, what some level of subsidy would look like and be required in order to provide some units at 80% of affordability as well as units at 120% of area median income affordability, which is really one of the harder areas for us to develop because it's right on, right on the margin of what's feasible for development. So when they, when they looked at those numbers, at 80% of area median income for a family of three, some, a subsidy would be required for a two-bedroom unit in the neighborhood of about 159,000 per unit. And 20% of area median income, what they found was a family of four would require some subsidy closer to that 88,000 or 89,000 per unit. And so in that whole project, what they did was break it out. Now, again, as I said, a primary goal of this project and the way we were analyzing it and setting it up was to ensure that there is market rate housing that is also affordable. And so what you see here on the screen, it shows 50% of the units under their assessment are fully market rate. That's 22 units. 45% of the units then would be reserved for up to 120% area median income. Now, 14 of those units would be the smaller two-bedroom units. Those would be fully market rate. There would be no subsidy provided. That is just a market rate housing unit. Six units then would be looked at as some subsidy at those three-bedroom units for the family of four. And then the two 80% of area median income units, two, two-bedroom units, could be subsidized. And so when looking at it in that way, that represents right about 20% of the overall project. So about one-fifth of this project would have opportunity for affordability built into it. And then there's, there's some of those background numbers. Again, the higher the size of unit, with the lower the income, the more subsidy that would be required. Our total cost estimate then on the subsidy of those eight units would be in the ballpark of $850,000 for subsidizing one-fifth of the units in, in the development. Now, here's where it gets interesting and where I think that this is an innovative way for us to go about doing this. When we look at the total sources and uses, and when we look at a development budget, all of the types of things that are included in doing that project, we found that just under $18.7 million would be the total cost of developing this site. Included in that cost would be $1.3 million, which we think is in, in the ballpark of the fair market value of the land that the city owns. And, and that is included. So that means that the city would have the opportunity to make that money back on the cost of the land. When you factor in the assumed market values for all 44 of those units, the total proceeds from sale would be 19.2 million. And so doing the math, that means that this project would produce around a $550,000 project or profit. The other line item that I would draw your attention to is in the somewhat middle there, there's a home builder profit line item, which is at 7% assumed. And that is another $1.3 million that goes into the development cost of the project. So when you add all three of those together, the land, the $1.3 million for land, the $1.3 million for home builder profit, and the 550,000 assumed proceeds from sale, that's a little over $3.15 million that we think could be derived out of this project. Now, one important note that I will point out is that within this budget, there are some costs not included. And that is because when we looked at the site, again, going back to our original review of the site years ago, there are some real constraints, some real off-site improvement constraints on, on any project that goes here, and the biggest cost of which is utility lines. So because it was a former school site and the way downtown is designed, you have alleyways. So the middle of this site is, in effect, what would have been an alleyway had the grid been built out downtown. And we require all of those to be undergrounded as a condition of approval for a project. And that's a huge cost. For quality of the project, I think anybody looking to buy a home on a site like this would also want those utilities undergrounded. And so we assume in this development budget that we would have the ability to go for some sort of Melrose financing. There's a couple of statewide programs that we are currently a member of, a joint powers authority that allows us to access some of those programs, where those costs could be bonded upfront with an assessment placed on the property over some long period of time to cover those costs. But when we're talking about the overall subsidy, again, $850,000 subsidy to provide one-fifth of the units at affordable for workforce housing out of a $3.1 million net surplus on, on a total project, it starts to look like this project really is highly feasible. I covered a little bit there about those site improvements and the infrastructure that needed, and then the affordable units that would lower some of that overall revenue stream that, that would come to the city. And so what I think the crux of the conversation here tonight is, is to start to get some sense from council, if, if you have some thoughts, would be what type of role would we want to start to play in this type of development? If you look at this chart, this is really just a simple risk-reward chart, and it identifies a whole variety of roles the city could play in this type of development. Down in the bottom left-hand corner, lowest risk, lowest reward would be just a land seller. We could entitle this project, we could sort of package it together, sell it off to a builder, and they would then be the ones that really take the bulk of that risk in making the project happen. We could provide land subsidy, so as a part of some sort of just land sale deal, we could utilize some of that land value to subsidize some of the units to provide for some of that affordability. We could provide soft lending. This is a very common way in which we might be a soft second for a first-time homebuyer. So assuming we sold the project off and it got built through that negotiation, we could assure that we were income qualifying some folks at these income levels and then providing them some subsidy in the way of seconds or first-time homebuyer assistance. We could be a loan guarantor. Loan guarantor would be, in effect, as, starting to move into more of the co-development space. And that's where we then could start to put up some cash assets to leverage against the project. That's where the, the risk starts to go up, but again, the equity reward starts to also go up with it. We could be a soft lender to a developer. So again, through some negotiated deal, provide financing for their project. Or we could be a full co-developer. One of the things that the, our housing operation, led by Latan Jones, will be bringing to this body, into the Housing Authority body, at some point in the future, once we have the structures in place, is going to be a conversation about forming some sort of 501(c)(3) development, self-development partnership, whereby we can take a more active role in being a developer so that as we look at some of the economies, like I've showed you on this project, ultimately we, the city, or we, the Housing Authority, we, the residents of Fairfield, can take advantage of some of the economics that are very favorable for this type of construction, for this type of development. So next steps, and I know I'm throwing a lot at you right now, that's why this was intended really as a, as a preliminary introduction and conversation. Next steps, I mean, we're, we're just at the very beginning phase there with a preliminary conversation with council. We would look to come back with further analysis based on any input or direction you would be interested in giving us tonight. That would probably be in the springtime. We do have a firm onboard that is, in addition to the market consultant, that is a specialty firm in doing development financing. So they're helping to guide us through some of the backend realities of making this project happen. Then depending on council direction at that time, we would start to put together some sort of development team and negotiate what that, what our role will be, again, based on the way I just described some of those roles, and then could potentially move into pre-development. Best-case scenario, this would be a construction underway. If, if we're to take a co-development role, we would have construction underway, we think, by Q1 of 2022. Our consultant on the market study believes that there's an absorption rate, which means, you know, the number of units we could, you know, reasonably sell at market would take about one year then to sell all the units. And so because it's an eight-unit, or eight buildings on the site, there would be pre-sale of units, then they get built over time. But the overall absorption and ability to develop the project would be about one year. With that, that is pretty much my presentation. I'm happy to take questions and answer any, any questions you have or help to guide some discussion about what, what levels of risk-reward the council may be interested in taking with this.
Council colleagues, any, any comments or questions for David?
Yeah.
Councilmember Moy, go ahead, please.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. You put a lot out there tonight, and it's something that I need to think a lot more about and actually talk to my bosses, who are the citizens of this city, about this, this type of thing. In general, I don't think that government should be getting into the real estate business or the development business. I think that that's something that private industry should do. I don't think we should compete with private folks to do these things. However, in some cases, I understand why it's important. So I would like to be more educated on this. I appreciate your information tonight, but I have about two million more questions that I'll have to ask you at another time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Moy. Any other comments? Councilman Tim, please.
David, thank you. If you took the co-developer from the, the opposite end on your risk-reward, and we're into about 1.3, correct? What would guarantee, which box would guarantee the most control over affordability? Because when we go private, we start to lose the affordability component. And especially, we're redoing Fairfield, the Heart of Fairfield plan. Which box would assume the most control?
I mean, to be honest with you, I don't think any one box particularly assumes the most control. Obviously, the more we go towards co-development, the more control we have over the overall project. You know, on the front end, from a land negotiation, if we were to be more of that land seller, we have, we have all the negotiating rights that, that we would have as a landowner in structuring that project. Now, you know, the more, the more affordability then that we require into that project, the, the lower that profit margin becomes. And as such, then I think we do lose some bargaining power if we were to just go towards, you know, some, some carte blanche negotiation. But I think there's opportunity, you know, under the umbrella, you know, one of the things I should have pointed out, you know, the, these steps or these, these roles, they're not mutually exclusive. We could be, you know, some combination of all of these. And that's where there, there still is more analysis for us to do, for us to really kind of hone in on what that would look like. I, I will point out that as a co-developer, we, we are perfectly fine bringing on partnerships. And we, in fact, would require that we would bring on a partnership. Typically with these types of structures, as we got more sophisticated after a few projects, then that's where that nonprofit arm really could take over as a lead developer and doing some, you know, more traditionally affordable tax credit projects, grant-funded projects. This one, like I said, this is more, this is trying to thread the needle where we can provide affordability and potentially make a return that is at or greater than our land value, where we can then roll that into other affordable projects elsewhere in the city.
Okay, that answered my question. Thank you.
Any other comments, colleagues? Excellent presentation, David. Are you familiar with any projects in the Bay Area that are examples of what you're describing here in terms of housing and efficiency?
I'll defer to Latan on that because he's got a lot more knowledge on that than I do.
Yes, this is Latan Jones, Director, Housing Services. This is a model that is used in a lot of housing authorities around the actual country. HUD is actually really urging housing authorities to actually become into actual self-development role. So in Sacramento, we utilized this process where we had, we were a co-developer. In Richmond, we came in as a co-developer. This was all, this is also done in Oakland, where like, for instance, the Oakland Housing Authority, a lot of their projects, they're actually self-developing those projects themselves. So this is a model that is used with many of the housing authorities around this, in this state as well as in the country as well, because this is the direction that HUD really wants local agencies to actually move in.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would just echo, Councilmember Moy's concerns are, are valid, allowing the private sector to do what the private sector does best and, and letting that progress. When we get into certain kinds of projects, however, low-income, many of these spur development, especially in your Heart of Fairfield, oftentimes those aren't very attractive to the private sector without us stepping in and having some skin in the game. And of course, if we're going to put some skin in the game, I'm always hesitant to think of it like government going in and throwing money. If there's a way for us to gain some, as, as, as I think David beautifully demonstrated, gain some profit back through our participation that then can then be reinvested. In other words, thinking of it like a business rather than, you know, we're simply going to spend tax dollars without getting any kind of return on that, on that investment. So if the private sector was willing to pick up some of these things and do that, that would be the, that would be the ultimate way to have it happen. Unfortunately, what we find is it doesn't pencil well a lot of times. So your point, Councilmember Tim, of, you know, how, how affordable will it be and how much control do you have over that? That's, that's the challenge. This is an option that we, we think is worth looking at.
I think it's an absolutely excellent option, especially because it's so close to the transportation center on Beck Avenue, as well as the train station over in Sissons City. So for those folks who are going to be relying on public transportation to get to and from work, it's a beautiful location. What we need to do is try to figure out a way that we can meet all of our needs, but at the same time emphasize the fact that it is to be affordable and sustainable. Sustainability is a big issue for me. Excellent presentation, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Bring it back for council action?
No action. Just was receiving the report and answering questions.
And our final item, then, item number 25, Madam Clerk.
Item 25, Heart of Fairfield, termination of Fairfield Main Street Association contracts for downtown promotions and PBIA administration services. And again, our presenter is David Gassaway.
Once again, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, David Gassaway, Assistant City Manager. I'm here tonight to present a recommendation to council that I know is controversial to some. That recommendation is to not renew, thereby terminating the two-year, the two agreements with Fairfield Main Street Association.
The decision to make this recommendation did not come lightly. However, after reviewing objectively what is needed to revitalize downtown, after reviewing operations of other business districts successfully helped to turn around historic downtowns, and after many conversations with stakeholders, it seemed clear it was time for some change. Before I get to details of the recommendation, I want to take a couple of minutes to, again, discuss the vision for what downtown Fairfield will become. The Heart of Fairfield Strategic Plan identifies downtown as the social, economic, and cultural center of Fairfield, and the city is making a substantial investment to see that vision to fruition. When I started in April of this year, City Manager Chatwin tasked me with reviewing the Heart of Fairfield Plan, the implementation of that plan, and to identify how we could get it on an accelerated track. Certainly heard council mention that as well through some of our updates. In my time, I've observed many things that have and are going well with implementation of Heart of Fairfield, and some areas where there is room for some change. Let me be clear, there is no single silver bullet way downtown starts to be identified in the Heart of Fairfield Plan. It will only be accomplished through a multifaceted, coordinated, and iterative process. To remember, back in May, and as well as in September of this year, I presented updates on the many things progressing with the plan. Staff's goal has been to bring City Council items each month that deal with Heart of Fairfield to ensure we make the continued incremental progress required for revitalization. To recap, some of our efforts have included, $100,000 have been in facade improvement grants that downtown businesses have been awarded, with another $150,000 authorized by council in June. To leverage the facade improvement program, we've created a retail-to-restaurant program where we work with property owners of vacant retail spaces to do rough architectural work, then run it through our entitlement process, so that we can deliver back to that owner, looking for a tenant, shovel-ready tenant improvements to convert a space from retail to restaurant uses, thereby freeing up the pool of potential businesses. Along those same lines, we removed red tape and cost barriers to make it easier for businesses to host live entertainment, and for prospective businesses to sell alcohol or have tasting and taprooms along Texas Street. Currently underway is an economic development strategic plan with a primary focus of looking at the underlying economics of downtown. Once we have that full data analysis, we will, we will be recreating, excuse me, a recruitment and retention strategy for businesses, and we'll develop a proactive marketing plan that focuses on advertising downtown, highlighting its distinct character, and inviting private investment in opportunity sites. Less than a month ago, we hired an economic development manager who has been tasked with connecting, or has been tasked to connect with businesses, as well as property owners and brokers representing properties in downtown, and start to build the coalition of entrepreneurship required for a thriving business environment. I just spoke about the Simieto site development concept that has a variety of options for us. The project really is aiming to both increase property values, which is less than more attractive, and increase ownership levels, so there is more long-term commitment in the Heart of Fairfield. That project, along with a new multifamily project further down on Woolner to the west, represents more than 200 units of new housing in the Heart of Fairfield that puts people downtown to support those businesses. On December 12th, we have planned our first touch-up-the-town event, community, touch-up-the-town event, where our Housing Services Department is organizing volunteers to do community work to make improvements on homes. These touch-ups will include simple things like weed pulling, trash collection, tree trimming, painting, and other minor repairs. That is now, as we've just heard about, the purple COVID tier. We are awaiting some guidance from Public Health on whether or not to proceed with that, but certainly something we've been working on. We're leveraging grant opportunities with more than $700,000 received this year to get projects shovel-ready for the infrastructure improvements needed in order to develop housing and commercial mixed uses at the higher densities called for in the Heart of Fairfield Plan. Public Works is advancing and are studying capital improvement projects to make bike and pedestrian improvement, underground overhead utility lines along Empire Street and within alleyways, looking at innovative street modifications to rethink parking and free up developable land. At your next meeting, the 1st of December, we'll introduce a parklet program, which, to install platforms on the street that go flush up to the curb, outdoor seating or outdoor dining opportunities, which, given the prolongment of COVID, is crucial to those businesses. And in January, we'll bring to you a capital improvement project to make street improvements with removable ballards and changeable signage that makes closing Texas Street for special events quick, easy, and cost-effective. That project, if it moves forward, will provide an entirely reimagined community gathering space downtown with almost limitless opportunities for use. And lastly, we are making efforts to reengage with business owners. In its infancy, is a renewed business watch program to improve connection amongst business owners and city public safety. Our new police chief is committed to providing more eyes on the street and ensuring businesses and residents like do not feel there is a lack of presence downtown. This council set a bold vision for what downtown Fairfield can and should be, and staff is energized by the challenge of seeing it happen. But it will take a lot of work, out-of-the-box thinking and tenacity to see it through, which leads me to my recommendation to terminate the contracts with Main Street. At the core, the recommendation is a hard reality, that sometimes it's just time for a change with fresh perspectives and eyes on problems. Started in 2010, the association is a California nonprofit mutual benefit corporation. It was originally incorporated with assistance by the city, approved by some of the council members that are in attendance tonight, as a strategy to manage the parking and business improvement area, or what has also been referred to as Downtown Improvement District, that was once run by a council-appointed committee. Through the promotions contract, Main Street Association was provided funding to put on various special events throughout the year, which, as I'm told, prior to the Great Recession, were handled by in-house staff. The administrative contract with the association calls for them to administer and execute the Main Street Approach framework. That framework guides historic downtown revitalization efforts to help communities transform and grow over time. Development by Main Street, developed by Main Street America, which is a subsidiary of the National Trust for Historic Preservation, the framework is a strategy that articulates a focused, deliberate path to revitalizing or strengthening a downtown or commercial district's economy. However, in looking at our downtown, the effort over the past decade does not seem to have produced that full intended consequence, or full intention. Compared to other similarly situated communities that have implemented the same program through business districts, the results are unfortunately not quite there. I want to make clear to council and community that this recommendation is not personal nor intended to insult Fairfield Main Street Association or their staff. I know they have worked hard through the years. They've put in passion and dedication to provide a service to the public. Their efforts do deserve our gratitude. At the end of the day, this is a business decision, one founded on an objective review of what is best for the city and advancing efforts to revitalize downtown Fairfield. It is my professional opinion that the money spent on the contracts can be better utilized if directed to other efforts. As referenced in the staff report, my recommendation is twofold. The first would be that we maintain a weekly farmer's market by partnering with an established organization that specializes in the operation and management of farmer's markets. We've already reached out to operators in the region who have expressed interest in operating downtown, beginning next spring. We can put those details together and start to negotiate what those, what that agreement would look like if given that direction by council tonight. The second would be to maintain the marquee events that are called out in the promotions contract. Those include Restaurant Week, 4th of July, the Tomato Festival, Veterans Day, and the Christmas Tree Lighting. Now, in the staff report, one of the things we said in there was that we would release an RFP to find some firm or organization to run those events on an interim basis while we newly hired Parks and Rec director and a focus on bringing those types of special event operations in-house. Through conversations with the city manager and myself over the past week, as well as conversations, I think maybe he has had, with the prospective new director, we don't think that interim period would be necessary. When we look at the schedule of the marquee events, the first up, in terms of the calendar, would be Restaurant Week, which is something that we're confident we can handle in-house, mostly. And then, the first of the other events would kick off in July on the July 4th Independence Day celebration, and we're confident that if we just move, it could be ramped up through our Parks and Rec operation in order to put on that, the Tomato Festival, Veterans Day, and the Christmas Tree Lighting by next year. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel colleagues, you have any comments for David before we open it up to the folks who are here this evening?
Mayor, this is Rick.
Councilman McCarroll.
But I think, yeah, I'd like to hear from the people in the audience first.
Any other comments, colleagues?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before that does happen, I think there's a few things that I probably need to clarify a little bit. As David and I and others have consulted on this, this is not a decision that David simply came to on his own. This was a discussion item that he and I and others have had. David and I have together gone over the pros and cons, and in the end, the recommendation to terminate this contract, that falls on my head, not on David's. So, if there is a disagreement, or if there are bad feelings or feelings, that's on my shoulders, as I take a look at the opportunities to move forward. And again, the City Council, when you interviewed me a year ago, made it very clear that one of your highest priorities, homelessness and Heart of Fairfield, and we talked a lot about things that need to happen in order to take that to the next level, and the next level, and the next level. And continuing to go down a road of status quo is not going to get us the returns and the impacts and the results I think that you have challenged us with. I think it was President Woodrow Wilson said, "If you want to make enemies, try and change something." I recognize that this is not going to be popular with folks, that we're making enemies, possibly with some people on this. But I think that's the price you pay as you continue to thoughtfully put together a strategy to take things to the next level. And so, I stand by this recommendation. I think this is the right, well, I more than think, I know this is the right way to go. You've seen some of the changes that have already been implemented in the last year. This is one of many that we're going to be bringing to the council. You've seen other changes that we've brought to you. So, I'll shut up now and let the public have their opportunity to speak on this, and you all to have a good discussion, and that we will happily do whatever the council decides they want to do.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, the first speaker is Tara Cruz. And in the back, they get four minutes per person.
And you will have four minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Fairfield City Council. My name is Tara Cruz, and I will be speaking from experience as a former Main Street Association board member and downtown Fairfield business owner. I have always had questions that yet to be answered. Why was our farmer's market in a commuter city held on Thursday between 3:00 and 7:00 versus a Friday or Saturday when commuters are not stuck in traffic? Why does the low attendance at events not represent the diversity or fullness of our city? Why was over 75% of the budget allocated to payroll for Main Street? Why does the majority of the Main Street Association Board, I can't breathe, oh, nice, why is business owners and community members' money being spent on outside entities instead of investing it in our members and city? Why is it acceptable not to have a strong connection and relationships with our local businesses and organizations in our own community? Why are there not any expectations or governance over the Main Street Board? In 2018, the association violated their own bylaws by adding a member after the elections in November. In addition, they backdated the start date to October to outnumber the three newly appointed downtown business candidates, a direct violation of their bylaws because the member's name should have been on the ballot in November. This shows the extremes that this organization is willing to do to forego not having change. I would like the record to show that the downtown business owners' money has been poorly invested and mismanaged. And for this reason, I would like to see the application process be open to our local community. I would like to end on a brighter note. For the past three years, downtown businesses have hosted Halloween downtown. The participation has grown every year, from three, an average of 300, 500, to 800 by volunteers and donations. This year, downtown businesses, local Fairfield businesses, the Matt Garcia Foundation, community members, and our local police department partnered together to bring a safe, successful event for our community during these uncertain times. Proof that we can be even more successful when partnering together. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Daye Sperring.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. My name is Daye Sperring, and I am the General Manager of the Downtown Theater at 1035 Texas Street. Since the Downtown Theater Foundation for the Arts has taken over the operation of the venue, we have seen the theater grow quickly and efficiently. We have, pre-COVID, had a 90% occupancy on rentable days. Annually, we have 25,000 people walk through that venue, and since 2013, over 2,000 people have purchased tickets to events. This does not include the events where we cannot charge for tickets, which brings that number up in thousands. Even during COVID, the very small window we had where we could perform outside, we sold out every single event. Not only has the arts flourished inside the building, but the outside too has seen major changes. The courtyard was fenced in for security, however, that enabled us to move the venue outside and continue presenting art. We have a new roof. We have been landscaped and lit for safety, and most noticeably, we have a state-of-the-art marquee, which has increased our ticket sales by 25%. So much positive change has come to the Downtown Theater in the past eight years. We have made a name for ourselves and bring something truly unique that enriches the community. I personally renamed the Downtown Theater, the Downtown Theater, from the FCCA because of the pride we take in being downtown. I say all this because this change came with an amazing partnership with the city of Fairfield. Where I have seen very little change in the past eight years is the rest of downtown. The Main Street Association has not really acknowledged that downtown theater is part of downtown, unless they need equipment for a festival or a place to hold a meeting, and that comes at the expense of the downtown theater as we pay for the staff. I think it is time for a change, a new direction, and more harmonious relationship between the people who actually own and run the businesses, the Heart of Fairfield and the city. I see a downtown where business owners have an obligation to hold a certain standard, a pleasant-looking and vibrant storefront, congruent aesthetic, that makes people want to shop, eat, be entertained, and possibly open up their own small business in downtown Fairfield, and not be worried that their neighbor will be boarded up or rundown, but instead have art photos and other Fairfield-centric things presented in those empty storefronts. I see a downtown with a theme and a standard and a welcoming feel, and I don't see that happening unless we have change, new voices, and a driven partnership, something that is very lacking now. I will speak for many business owners when I say, we would love to be a part of the growth for the downtown and have a voice, and I personally would like to do what I can to help every business grow as much as the Downtown Theater has in the last eight years. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Erin Robinson.
My name is Erin Robinson, and I am co-owner of Alpha Avenue Blow Dry Bar in downtown Fairfield. Prior to opening our salon in the Heart of Fairfield, I had been managing a salon in Walnut Creek for seven years. Me and my business partner decided we wanted to open our own salon closer to home and decided downtown would be the perfect spot. We chose downtown because it's special to us, as we are ARMEO alumnis, and City Council Member is actually our, Rick McCarroll was actually our principal. So, this place held a special part in our heart. So this place held a special part in our heart. Although we have been surviving even during COVID, just imagine how well businesses will flourish if downtown reaches its fullest potential. This is a time for growth. This is a time for change. Although it can be risky and scary, it is imperative. What about working together, businesses in the city of Fairfield, to make updates to downtown, to make it safer and more appealing to the eye so that residents don't feel like they have to leave their city to hang out, shop, or dine? Something that stood out to me personally in the year and a half that I've been an owner in downtown Fairfield is that the only time I heard from the Main Street Association was when they needed or wanted participation for their events. But we, the business owners, have ideas, we have suggestions, and we're tired of not being heard. It won't be easy, but we are ready to do the work. Why not allow us to work as a community, terminate the Main Street Association contract, and make downtown great again? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Beverly Brun.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. My name is Beverly Brun. I have lived in Fairfield for over 41 years. I'm here in support of the Fairfield Main Street Association. In discussing vitalization of downtown, I think part of the problem is that the city staff did not live here in Fairfield 10 years ago and have no idea what downtown was like. I served on a jury in 2010 and was shocked at how bad downtown looked. There were many boarded-up storefronts and only one restaurant. This year, pre-COVID, downtown was greatly improved with many restaurants and cute shops. I believe that the lack of participation of members at board meetings is positive. If the business owners are happy with what's going on, they probably will not attend a board meeting. Unhappy people are the ones who attend meetings. Also, interviewing 12 or so business owners out of the 200-plus business owners is not a very good sample. In July 2019, the City Council approved contracts of almost $620,000 paid to consultants outside of Fairfield. Putting events on for bid, out for bid means that once again, city money will be given to businesses who will not spend it in Fairfield. Also, how will these event planners or the city of Fairfield staff attract volunteers? The Tomato Festival requires a tremendous number of volunteers, and that's the most profitable event that they have. Most of the volunteers work because they were asked by Margaret or Yolanda, and they do work because they really like Margaret and Yolanda. I'm not going to volunteer if an out-of-town event planner is running the events or if the city is running the events, and I don't think a lot of people will. Also, if I were a business looking at downtown Fairfield, I would question the city's commitment to downtown when they will not even support a downtown business association. You cannot compare Fairfield's downtown to places like Walnut Creek or Danville. They have totally different demographics than Fairfield. In conclusion, I think the difference in our downtown in the last 10 years is amazing. I think our Fairfield Main Street Association has done a terrific job of improving our downtown. It is certainly not perfect, but some of it is because of lack of city support till now. For example, Fairfield does not have a square or plaza for people together. There is also the homeless problem that the city needs to address. I sincerely hope the City Council will reject the staff recommendations and support funding for the Fairfield Main Street Association. $60,000 or $90,000, whichever it is, is not a lot of money, especially out of a budget of $261 million. I have lived here a long time and love Fairfield. I want the best for our city and feel that rejecting the staff recommendations and funding the Fairfield Main Street Association is what is best. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Gina Rosowski.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Hi, Karen. I was shocked when I read this proposal. I did not think that the city manager nor the assistant city manager realized the impact this will have on the entire Fairfield community. Let's speak about the events that are put on annually downtown. Do you realize the volunteers FMSA has managed to get for these events? Margaret and Yolanda bring the community together by getting volunteers, and those volunteers are so dedicated, they come back every year. If you bring someone from the outside, these volunteers will not be as receptive to work with them. Margaret and Yolanda have established a support system like none other to put on each and every event. This community is pulled together through Travis Air Force Base, and I have seen an increase of people coming to both parades because of the time and effort FMSA put into each event. And during this time, you would think after the parade, people would stroll to downtown businesses, but you know what? Most businesses are closed during this time. If these businesses want business, they have to be open when FMSA brings the people inside. Margaret and Yolanda are highly respected in this community, and I just don't understand how you would want to replace someone like this who cares so much about Fairfield. A consulting firm or contract will not. I can almost guarantee you that once they see downtown, they will think people will not want to come. They will not want to try to make our events, work hard to make our events successful, as much as FMSA has done and improved over the last 10 years. Mr. Mayor, you have lived here for many years, and I have seen you at all the events. Haven't they gotten better over the years? Haven't you seen an increase in people at these events? This is due to FMSA and no one else. I see the city manager has only been here since last December and the assistant manager since March. They have never seen an event put on due to COVID-19. I am totally at a loss as to how you could even consider taking away funds from FMSA when you have not even been at an event. Please do not take this away from FMSA until you have witnessed what they can do. They are an amazing team for just two people and do put on awesome events. And I do not think paying consulting or contractors to do these events will help downtown. Thank you for your time.
And our next speaker is Yolanda Ramirez.
Good evening, Erin. Good council members. My name is Yoli Ramirez, and I've worked with FMSA for 10 years. When I hear there's no community in Fairfield, I enjoy replying that our largest annual two-day event, Tomato and Vine Festival, is run by only two staff members, community groups, and volunteers. People are pretty amazed. Boy Scout Troop assists with five-block vendor check-in and receive a free outreach booth. The Solano Community College basketball team runs a recycling program that Margaret implemented years ago. A grant allows us to fund the program and pass the $4,000 along to the basketball team. You may think this is very nice, however, it is more than nice. It's money that's spent in our community and stays in our community. FMSA once contracted with a specialized farmer's market center. They were paid $10,000 annually and produced what was a fair market. They brought in vendors that were not local. Those vendors received revenue from our residents and then took that revenue outside our city. We realized hiring outside event producers allows for tax leakage and a loss of community, something you cannot just add to your budget and put on. Like Benicia Main Street, FMSA took over production of our farmer's market to include community youth groups, churches, free booth spaces for downtown business owners, giving priority to local vendors first and promoting both city and community efforts. I am disappointed and quite surprised with city staff's recent decision not to approve the extension of our 2020 fall harvest market on Saturdays along Texas. That is our farmer's market that we wanted to extend onto Texas Street during the fall. At this time during a pandemic, our downtown business owners, retail, beauty, and restaurants could have benefited from expanding outdoors every Saturday. It's disheartening to see neighboring cities find solutions to extend their markets as long as possible to help their businesses and communities. We've seen a 75% increase in government assistance at our farmer's market. Unfortunately, this is also a missed opportunity to provide residents the benefit of utilizing their EBT and continue to receive a much-needed $10 week max. I wish to thank council for your support these past years. It has been a pleasure seeing you at our event, Mira Price, walking through Tomato Festival grounds, early morning greeting community vendors, wishing volunteers and staff luck. Rick McCarroll, who attends every ribbon-cutting, mixer, farmer's market opening parade. We have many pictures of you. Pam Bertani, who will make sure, she always yells out "thank you" from the fire truck at all of the parades. And Kat Moy, who shares and promotes all of our events, fun photographs on social media. It's more work than two women could do, but then again, there is the community. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker is Bonnie Falk.
Hello. I'm a full-time realtor and have been in this community for 40 years, in selling real estate for 37 years. And I've seen a lot of changes. When I moved to Fairfield, I had somebody ask me what a Jew was. I'm a Jewish person. That was very shocking. And I've seen a lot of good changes, but none more than in the last 10 years that Margaret and Yolanda have taken over the downtown business area. I think that we need a cheerleader downtown, and I think that all of you do a great job, I really do. But I think you're very busy and you have a lot to do. We need a liaison, somebody like Margaret and Yolanda to connect with downtown, to connect with the people. What's going to happen when the city takes over? Where are the cheerleaders going to be? We need cheerleaders for Fairfield. We have a lot of social issues that need to be taken care of, and I know it takes a lot of your time. I just wonder what's going to happen? We're going to use outside vendors? We're going to disconnect? We're not going to have the amount of people? We need a cheerleader, and the downtown Main Street Association has been the cheerleader. It hasn't worked for all the businesses, I realize. Maybe they need to reevaluate their business.
Next speaker is Erin Steiger.
Hello, Mayor, City Council, staff. My name's Erin Steiger. I am a volunteer and current board member with the Fairfield Main Street Association. I've been volunteering for 10 years. I started, I met Margaret 10 years ago, and when I found out what she did, I said, "How do I get involved?" And she said, "Well, you sign up for a slot chopping tomatoes," because that's the way you start. And so I did. I did a two-hour tomato chopping, and I had such a good time, I signed up for two slots the next year and then a whole day after that. And 10 years later, I'm running Tomato Alley, both days, all weekend, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. I've also been Santa Chaperone at the tree lighting. That was fun, stuffing them in my car. I run EBT cards at the farmer's market. I line up and send off entries in the parade. If you noticed the gap in the Veterans Day, sorry, that was me. Didn't send them at the right time. But my point is, all of that is volunteer work. There are two paid staff members with the Fairfield Main Street Association. The budget is not very big. And what I'm hearing from our city manager and assistant city manager, I love what I'm hearing. I love change. I love even hearing the business owners who it's not working for. That's what I want to hear because I think collaboration is the key to this. We have a team of people that could get 100, 200 volunteers tomorrow if you needed. We have new ideas from an assistant city manager and city manager that are brilliant. Why aren't we putting those two together? Why aren't we trying something different? I agree, let's try something different. But this is a resource that we don't want to lose. This is community. This is not bringing in an event planner to throw together a parade. This is a group calling up everyone they know in the community to get involved. And that is so special. I have chopped tomatoes. I'm an Armyo high graduate, and last year, I chopped tomatoes with the administrative staff of Armyo. They all came in and I'm like, "Oh, my gosh." You know, it's, those are the things that our citizens, our residents, want. And I want these businesses to succeed as well. I am not saying that we have done everything 100%. There is always room for improvement. But we need to be working together on this. I think that the loss of the Fairfield Main Street Association is huge to this community. And I have, it's been a joy and a pleasure for 10 years to get involved. And one of Margaret's favorite phrases is "all hands on deck." That's her, when she says "all hands on deck," it means get everybody you know and your friends, and we need help. And that's how we should be thinking as a community. What can we all do to get this city going on the track? I just want to say one last thing. I've been attending the Harta Fairfield meetings since the very first one launched in Willow Hall, and there was refreshments, and they put all the boards up and the plans, and I thought, "Oh, my gosh." You know, I grew up in Fairfield. I love Fairfield. I thought, "This is amazing." And then I waited, and then I waited, and then I waited, and I waited, and nothing happened. And this is finally what we've been waiting for, the help, the partnership, to really do what we want to do as an association. So I just want to say there's a lot of work to be done. I realize that. But I think the value of this association is beyond the $90,000 in contract that it costs.
Our next speaker is Benicia Hargrove.
Hello, good evening. I'm new to this. My name is Benicia Hargrove, Beauty by Benicia, which is in downtown Fairfield. I am not a new business owner, but I am new to the brick and mortar of Fairfield. And I was introduced to some of the programs in the city. And I can appreciate the fact that Ms. Margaret and Ms. Yolanda were very helpful and instrumental in helping me to navigate my way as a new business owner in Fairfield and downtown. And they were instrumental in helping me to secure a small grant for my business, which I can appreciate in these difficult times. It was very stressful, being closed for eight months and not having anything to fall back on. And so I just wanted to say that I appreciate them. I appreciate the Main Street Association for being there when I was able to call them, email them, and let them know what I was thinking, what I was feeling, and what I needed as far as business. So I appreciate them that they were able to step in and to help me out with that. And if they didn't know the answer, believe me, they'd call someone who did. And that person got in touch with me right away, and it was very helpful for me, and I appreciated that very, very much. So I look at it as a benefit to small business owners and anyone in downtown Fairfield to utilize their services. They helped me, and I'm sure that they can help others. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Pastor Art Sacker.
Thank you. I appreciate the mayor and council for what they're doing and considering what's going on. And I also like to thank the Fairfield Main Street Association for what they've attempted to do. I have some questions, and that's simply this. We talk about what we want for Fairfield. I think everyone here wants success for Fairfield, right? And one of the concerns I have is, how do you measure success? Do you have a figure or amount or what you want to see done in the community? Is that spelled out somewhere? Because I think it's important, if we're going to shoot for a goal, we ought to know what that goal is. Also, we talk about what is the cost? How much money are we spending to have these things take place with the association? What are we getting for the cost? Something to consider. What What, is there going to be extra money spent in order to make this a success with outside vendors? And when we really look at it as a whole, the question is, what do we want to see happen? Now, there's some other issues as well, and that's the continuation of the programs. And I just have here the farmer's market, which we participated in as a entertainment with puppets, and then the Fourth of July Tomato Festival, Veterans Parade. All these things are important, and the question is, will an outside organization be able to provide the same services as we're currently getting? And so that's some of the issues that I'm concerned about. And then we have some issues raised by our businesses downtown, and these issues are legitimate. They have invested their time, their talent, their treasure. They need to be heard, and we need to address these. But if we come together and we work for the purpose of making Fairfield a success, I believe we can solve these issues. And so that's really all I have to say. I'm not pro or against your proposal. I just want to make sure that the questions are answered and addressed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Brian Tubis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Brian Tubis. If you may not know, I'm an attorney at Matice Law Offices. I am also past vice president of the Main Street Association and its current chair, or its current treasurer. I'm also chair of several, a couple of our committees. Part of FMSA's responsibility in partnering with the city has been to use available PBIA funds and serve as essentially a quasi liaison between the city and downtown businesses. I think emphasis on regarding FMSA as a generator of revenue for the city is misplaced. The numerous challenges facing business recruitment and retention in any commercial downtown extend far beyond FMSA's responsibility and reach. Our efforts have always focused on promoting and assisting businesses that do choose to operate in downtown Fairfield, and we have worked tirelessly to cultivate relationships with each of them and facilitate their success. We have not always succeeded in that regard, but the efforts have been extensive and they have been sincere. FMSA's bylaws, the rate of our board participation and committee participation are in line with other regional and state California Main Street Association cities. It is a strain for any small business owner to take time away from their business to volunteer. However, during the past decade, numerous downtown business owners, employees, and even residents have contributed their time to serve on our board and our committees. Our current annual board of directors election slate even includes two new, two downtown business owners who are seeking to join our board for the first time. City staff cites their own informal survey of several dissatisfied business owners. We understand and appreciate their concerns, but it is unclear how those individuals are identified or selected. And again, the nature of public service is such that you are never going to make everybody happy 100% of the time. And I would also maintain that the dozen or so business members or owners that were sampled do not constitute a sufficient sample size to yield reliable survey results. FMSA has consistently maximized efforts to recruit and retain sponsors, but doing so is particularly challenging when you recall that most of our members are almost exclusively small, family-owned sole proprietorships. Despite the dearth of large corporate entities within our association's boundaries, we have pursued relationships with many such companies and have successfully recruited a number of them to sponsor our various events. We have also aggressively pursued available grant monies wherever possible, and we have annually produced and distributed marketing materials, such as our downtown dining and shopping guide, with the goal of generating both revenue and promotion. With respect to the city manager's prospective recommendations, we, I will remind council that we have successfully produced the Tomato Festival, holiday tree lighting, Independence and Veterans Day parades, farmer's market, and many other events during the past 10 years. Every member of this council has attended our events and can attest to their quality and the value that they accrue to the city and its residents. 2020 has obviously been an extremely challenging year for conducting events and generating revenue anywhere, but FMSA has historically done so with local businesses, vendors, and volunteers, rather than relying on participants from outside the city or the county.
Counselor, would you conclude, please?
I will do so, thank you. The city's Heart of Fairfield plan expressly anticipates a robust partnership with FMSA, and we believe it would be extremely short-sighted to terminate this longstanding relationship. We request the opportunity to sustain and grow our partnership with the city of Fairfield to benefit its businesses and its residents. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Margaret Manzo.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, I'm going to get rid of this, because I cannot breathe. Hi. Hi, everybody. Margaret Manzo, Executive Director, Fairfield Main Street Association. And I'm glad that Brian mentioned the Heart of Fairfield Plan. So let's talk about the Heart of Fairfield Plan for a minute. Because we, we are the Heart of Fairfield. You, me, and all of them are the Heart of Fairfield. We're the Heart of Fairfield. So we're all here because we care. And we care about the city, and bravo to everyone who showed up to care this evening. I served on the technical advisory committee for the Heart of Fairfield Plan for 18 months back in 2016. And this is the result. So I don't have room to carry this Bible. This is the result. Okay? This is it. It's a big pile or tome of paper and ideas and plans. Our organization is all over this plan. We're mentioned 24 times in the implementation plan. We can all agree that it's frustrating to see a plan finally come forth, and here we are four years later, and we're still waiting for the implementation. City staff recently referred Belayo to us for advice on how to run a Main Street program. Staff also recommended North Texas Street to us. Your own Heart of Fairfield paid consultant was directed to us for advice. Clearly, city staff sees the value in our program, or they wouldn't be referring others for our advice. Another thing many of you might not realize is how much we do behind the scenes. You heard from Benicia earlier, you know? We're uploading her tax documents, we're faxing things for people. This is private information. This isn't things that we share with other business owners. We help people with permits. We're currently administering a CDBG grant to support our restaurants. We take calls at all hours. Most of our businesses and property owners have my cellphone and call me all the time, and I'm here for them. And that's part of what Erin was talking to, about having that in-between, go-between person. All hours. And most of this stuff is confidential. We're not going to be boasting about all the great things we're doing. This is private matters. We've developed countless community partnerships over the years. You cannot subcontract relationships. They take years to develop, years. And that's what you have here that you're considering tossing away.
Margaret, would you conclude, please?
Here's what I think should happen tonight. I asked the council to extend the PBIA agreement for one year, and we'll go ahead and submit a bid for the RFP for the special events, along with anyone else who wants to do it. This will keep your Main Street Association intact, but allow some flexibility with the city. Finally, I think the city council will agree that this type of work can be thankless. We all do it, and it can be thankless. You give your heart, you give your soul, it's never enough. I'm okay with that, and I consider all of my efforts these past 10 years time well-spent. I love the city, and I'm not here for an award. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Alaskad.
Honorable city council members, honorable mayor. My name is Mike Alaskad, and five years ago, I opened up the Spot Gift and Flower Center downtown. I'm supposed to talk to you today about economics of being a small business owner, and how sometimes those economics don't work for people like me. Because unfortunately, as of this year, I had to close my own shop. But I don't want to talk to you about that today. Today, after hearing all the people supporting the Fairfield Main Street Association, I want to say a few thank yous. Not only was I a business owner, but I was also a former youth minister at Holy Spirit Church, just down the street from our downtown. And in 2019, we actually were able to take our youth group on a mission trip. And that was only possible because of that woman back there, Connie Ing. She owns Cruise One Travel. Without her help, my youth group would not have been able to go on this trip. She took care of our plane tickets, she took care of our hotels, our rental cars. And the only reason why I got in contact with Connie was through Main Street Association. We, I would not have this relationship without her, without this association. When I try to teach my kids about community involvement, I, I took them to the farmer's market, to where they could volunteer teaching and hosting games for kids while their parents went and shopped for healthy fruits and vegetables for them. When I talk to my youth group about community service, I invite them to come down to the Independence Day Parade, to the, to the Veterans Day Parade, so they can see how service to the community and service to our country is reflected and appreciated by our community. And then when I talk to them about community pride, I bring them to the Tomato Festival and to the Christmas tree lighting, all things that they may not have attended before, but since they were available and attended, they now feel pride here in the city of Fairfield. And all this is due to the great work of the Fairfield Main Street Association. I'm not here to talk to you as a business owner, I'm here to talk to you as a citizen, as somebody who's, has actual influence on our youth. I am not from Fairfield. I was not born here. I did not go to high school here. But it is here in Fairfield that I teach youth about community. And I could only do that because of my relationship with the Fairfield Main Street Association. So as they say, in the country of my birth, when expressing great gratitude, "Mas meravim salamat po." Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alnita Odom.
I've heard everyone speak about community, but I have yet to see any. I am here today as a business owner. I am co-owner of Alpha Avenue Blow Dry Bar. I also live in Fairfield, went to Armyo High School, and I am a business owner downtown. Somehow, we've made this about Yoli and Margaret, and it's not about them. It is about the lack of change that is happening downtown with, with the Main Street Association. We shouldn't compare our downtown to Walnut Creek and Danville, someone said earlier. You are correct. But why not compare it to the smaller cities nearby us that have a thriving downtown like Benicia, Petaluma, or Davis? I feel as though it's not about acquiring volunteers for events to put on and showcase our community spirit. I believe, as a business owner of downtown, that it takes the business owners to work with the community, with our city council, and with any other representative who wants downtown to thrive. You mean to tell me that if outsiders run these events, then you won't volunteer? Well, that doesn't sound like community. That does not sound like you care about what happens downtown Fairfield. But as a business owner, a young business owner, a young black female business owner downtown, Heart of Fairfield, we are not represented, we are not asked our opinion, but we are asked to show up and participate in events. I want everybody, every business owner to have a say. So if that means dismantling Main Street Association and making a business association downtown that knows how to bring in people, that knows the importance of diversity and representation downtown, and not just a friend group who wants their friend to keep a paycheck. This is about more than that. It's about those vacancies walking down North Texas Street, Texas Street. It's about the other side of Texas Street thriving when we are the downtown. We should be important. We are your locals. We are starving, we are in a pandemic, most of us have not been helped, none of us have been saved. Thank God for the one woman who has. But as, as a representation of majority of the business owners in this room, we are not satisfied with Main Street Association. We need change, we require change in downtown Fairfield. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker then is Scott Griffin.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and fellow residents. My name is Scott Griffin, and I'm a small business owner in downtown Fairfield. I moved my business in 2011 to Fairfield, and very soon after I did that, I met Margaret Yoli, who came and mentioned that they represented Fairfield Main Street Association, that they were able to offer me resources to help my business. And at first, I was somewhat apprehensive, but after a few years of talking to Margaret, I understood what she was all about and what Yoli was all about, efforts that were sincere. And they've made an excellent effort for getting you to come to downtown Fairfield, making those businesses succeed. 2015, I became a member of the Economic Development and further cemented my relationship with not only the town of Fairfield, but the Main Street Association. Since then, I've acted on that committee, reaching out to businesses just like mine. And I've gone and introduced myself to many of the businesses up and down Fairfield, Tech Street there, and enjoyed that immensely. I think that Fairfield Main Street Association has done an excellent job, nine years that I've interacted with. I hope that council reconsider's the recommendation by the county council. Thank you.
Next speaker, Connie Ing.
My name is Connie Ing, and I am the owner of Cruise One Dream Vacations here in Fairfield. I've been in business for seven years, with the last five being in the downtown Fairfield. When I was looking for a new office five years ago, I felt that my business would benefit from the Main Street Association, as they were actively promoting local businesses. as they were actively promoting local business. This was one of the reasons I moved to the Downtown Improvement District. Since then, we have participated in a number of the festivals and events, such as the yearly Tomato Festival, the Tree Lighting, Veterans Day Parade, as well as the weekly Farmer's Market. These activities have helped me promote my business as well as meet members of the community. When Margaret Manso approached me last month about joining the Board of Directors, I was really excited about the opportunity to give back to the organization and help my fellow business owners. I'm looking forward to working with the rest of the board and assisting my neighbors this January. Thank you for your time.
Francisco Castillo.
Good evening, mayor and councilor in Fairfield. I'm here just to show my gratitude to this group of ladies over here in this main association. I think I'm the new baby in downtown Fairfield. I bought that place back in October, 7/21, Texas Street, with a partner. My partner passed away. I was a silent partner. And then I find myself with this business. Also, I've been doing real estate for 35 years. I have an office in Vallejo, and also I'm an accountant. So I found myself in this place. I said, "What am I going to do?" Right in March, in the middle of March, when my partner passed away. And I said to myself, "What am I going to do? What am I going to do?" I spent almost three months asking myself, "What should I do? Should I keep this place? Or buy my other business?" And so I contacted Downtown Association. And they've been very, very helpful to me personally for my business. They helped me get all the license that I needed. They gave me a lot of help on my applications. And also my business, they've been getting new grants. And the restaurant, doing okay right now because of the help I'm getting from them. So I'm here just to support them because, I apologize for the rest of the business owners, but I'm talking on my behalf. They've done great things to my business. Thank you.
Next speaker, Tim Merle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council and staff. My name is Tim Merle. I'm the director of the Small Business Development Center for Solano County, also a Fairfield resident. And I just wanted to share some perspective with you as someone who's been working day in and day out this year with our small business owners who have been struggling mightily. It's been a brutal year for them. I guess my perspective in this is we've worked with over 1,000 small businesses in the county. Many of them here in Fairfield is that it's been extremely difficult. We've done everything we can with the SBA loans, with grants. One very generous grant from the city of Fairfield that we've been honored to be involved in helped a number of businesses to stay alive. We've helped some businesses to pivot and do business virtually and take out and whatnot. And I would just say that despite all of those efforts, unfortunately, it's still grim. I mean, our data shows that in our county and really throughout the state that nearly 40% of our small businesses have either closed their door or are anticipating closing their door. And the fact that we moved back to Purple yesterday, I fear is going to only make those numbers worse. So how does this relate to this puzzle with Fairfield Main Street Association? I guess at the core of who I am, I'm a proponent of small business. And I really would hate to see any kind of resource, any kind of resource pulled away from our small businesses right now. And that's why I'm here, just to talk about that. And I understand that there's mixed reviews on the effectiveness maybe of the association. But the bottom line is, I know that they have caused hundreds of people to come downtown and do business with our downtown businesses. And sometimes that's to have a meal during an event, but other times it's, "Hey, I found out that there's this restaurant here. There's a Mediterranean restaurant," or "There's a tutoring place or something" that causes them to continue to do business. So I understand there might be other options here, but man, we're at a critical stage right now. We can't afford any interruption of support to our small businesses. We can't afford to lose one more small business than we've already lost. And so I guess my thought to you tonight in consideration of this proposal is, is this the right timing? Is this the right time to do this? Is it possible that it makes sense to wait six months, a year? I don't know what it is. But it's really a thing of timing. So thank you. I appreciate you. Thank you for your service and for the opportunity to speak with you tonight.
And the last speaker on item 25 is Teresa Diaz.
Hi, my name is Teresa. I'm the owner of Teresita Floral downtown Fairfield and co-owner of Gala Cover and Rental. And I'm here to ask you for a change. We do need a change. Ten years, if we didn't have a change in 10 years, I just don't see one year is going to happen. So I see a lot of people coming up here and talking positive. And like they said, it's nothing personal. I don't have nothing personal, but I have my business. And I seen a lot of businesses closing. Businesses that have been here for many years. Christina's Boutique. Now we have Napada Sherry. Yes. So how many more businesses are going to close down? And it just breaks my heart every time I see it. I'm not from Fairfield. I am from Dixon, and I drive every day here. My business partner, we're here. We have three businesses in one location. And during the pandemic, we closed for three weeks, thank God, because if it wasn't for her that she called me at home, I would be watching TV. But she called me at home and said, "Hey, because of the florists, we were essential. We can reopen and start working." And that's how we were be able to keep the business. And because we have a wonderful landlord. But unfortunately, there is not many businesses fortunate like us, like Jackie, that she had to close her business. And I am not blaming nobody, but we need to have a change. We need to reinvent. Many times with the previous, in my mind, just hit that. I asked once the president, I asked him once, "What is the purpose of your job?" And he says, "What do you want me to be?" And I said, "No, I'm asking you. What is your purpose in your association? What is your purpose for us to help us?" And he said, "What do you want me to be?" He never answered my question. Like, he didn't know what was his job. And I thought that his job was to help us, the Downtown Association. That was my expectation.
And would you conclude, ma'am? You have about one minute, please.
I'm sorry?
You have one minute.
I have one minute. Thank you. And all I'm asking is that we have a change, whether they stay or not. It's the change that we need to look better, not to have people come over and say, "Oh, this place, I don't want to come downtown because I'm afraid." Ms. Jane, she had her parents saying, "Is it safe to drop my child for the classes?" You know, how scary that is? The parent had to call to ask if it's safe to drop a child in downtown Fairfield. Because whether there's a homeless or because of what they have heard on the news, how do you feel? You know, just think about that. You're welcome.
One more speaker. I did have six cards that people did not put what they wanted to speak about. What was your name?
My name is...
Zach?
Yeah, Zach Young. I'm with the Matt Garcia Foundation.
Oh, okay. Did you fill out a card?
No, I'm sorry. This is my first time here.
Okay, that's fine. I'll just add your name. Thank you, Zach.
Yeah, thank you guys for having me, letting me speak. So on behalf of the Matt Garcia Foundation, I just wanted to express our interest in fulfilling this position of undertaking the responsibilities of holding the annual four to six events per year. I do believe that we are a younger generation with Sakina, Brianna, Nathan, and I, as well as the whole board. We've come together to create events such as the winter events, the ones you have during the Christmas Tree Lighting. We've had those over the past three years. And I think it brings a lot of smiles to the kids' faces. And I think bringing in those smiles, bringing in that comfort, and creating those safe spaces for them to feel comfortable in, that they can express themselves. I think that's very important to downtown and also very important to partnering with the small businesses that are struggling right now. And a lot of families would, the whole community needs that. So I'm just here to express my interest. I just really want to see, because I grew up in Fairfield as well, I do really want to see downtown Fairfield be brought back to life with this spirit. And if that involves change, so be it. I'm not discrediting anything that the Main Street Association has accomplished over the years. But I think it would be refreshing to just bring that spirit back. So thank you for letting me speak.
Madam Clerk, do you have any other cards?
Did anyone else want to speak? I have six cards. Sydney Allen. Very tiny writing. Magdalene Chen. Sydney Jace Sears. Lenea Gartha. Marlena Chilase. And Thomas Event. They did not put what item they wanted to speak about. Okay? Then I have no more cards. I just have cards for public comment.
That concludes our presentation. I want to thank all the speakers. Appreciate your being here this evening. Now bring it back for council discussion and action.
Mayor, this is Rick.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, this is Rick. Can I? Yeah, hi. First of all, I want to thank all the speakers for their passion and their feelings about, I know it's a tough situation that everybody's dealing with right now. But I have a couple of clarifying questions for David Gassaway. Can you hear me, David?
Yes.
Okay. So you mentioned bringing it in-house now. But what about, you also mentioned the farmer's market. Do you plan on having an outside person doing that permanently? Or do you plan on bringing that in-house also?
Our thinking was that that would be contracted permanently. There's in the broader region, broader sort of three or four county region, there's three different agencies that put on farmers. The sole mission of those organizations. And so they're the ones that we had started conversations with about any interest in doing this.
Okay, so you're looking for one person to do that, correct?
Or one organization.
That's what I mean, one organization.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And also you mentioned about the parades and the Tomato Festival. And you didn't mention the possibility of other events. I know you said you'd like, but is that the goal of this item? That eventually we would have more events than two parades and the Tomato Festival and the Restaurant Week?
Yes, yeah. Goal long-term would be that we're doing as many events downtown as possible, big and especially small, that are bringing folks out on a more routine basis to support businesses and do some of that stuff.
And, okay. And also, and you think that could all be done in-house through Parks and Rec?
Yeah, Rick, maybe I should respond to that as well. Potentially, yes, it could. In my experiences with various other cities, and including leading a Parks and Rec department for a city of similar size and scope some years ago, a city this size oftentimes has a division that is special arts, arts culture and special events, they call it. And it's dedicated towards the promotion of art, of culture, of theater, of all kinds of things that are part of the quality of life of a community and keeps a community vibrant and interesting and engaging. And so not only would this division perhaps take a coordinating role in putting on special events, and the comments are correct, it takes many volunteers to do this well. But some of those things may be, they simply coordinate with other outside organizations that might do it, whether that's a Chamber of Commerce or anybody else that may have an idea and want to put on an event. You have a division that is dedicated. They understand all the permitting processes. They understand how to deal with road closures. You don't have a lot of the last minute, "Oh, we maybe forgot," or "Can we do something like this?" or "I need to call the fire department." Because it's all down in a perfect formula that they do day in and day out. They're dedicated to that. But the comments about having participation with the business community and residents as well, absolutely critical. And yes, these folks are very, very good at that.
I guess the issue I would have would be, I wouldn't want to see a bunch of RFPs going out all the time, even if it is being coordinated by the city. I would have an issue with that.
I would agree with you. It's not an effective or efficient way to do it if you're just simply throwing that out to a bunch of RFPs for a bunch of different events.
No, I agree. Okay, that's it for now. If I have anything else, I'll let you know.
Thank you, councilman. Any other comments, colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Moye here.
Councilman Moye, go ahead, please.
So I have thought a whole lot about this, like I'm sure we all have. I've talked to a lot of people. I've also dug in a little bit, which I'm apt to do. And I can tell you that not from our gentleman, Mr. Gassaway, who's worked on this, or our city manager... who's worked on this, or the city manager, but some of the people who presented to them, um, are, are very politically motivated and in a negative way. Um, and I'm not going to name names here, but I can just tell you that it really is an ugly undercurrent. And, um, I'm sorry to see that. I do want to acknowledge that, um, we need to do better, um, downtown. I think frankly, that we as a council have set up, um, the downtown organization, which are two women who put their heart and soul into this. We set them up to fail in a way. They do not have the, um, they don't have the money nor the assets to do what everybody expects them to do. It sounds like people expect them to keep the downtown clean, make sure all the businesses are booming, uh, make sure that it looks beautiful, put on all of these things. And that's just not what they're supposed to do. We have failed us, me, on the city council and that we didn't give them specific things to do and come back and, and tell us what they do. And I don't just mean raising money. Because when would two women, two men, two anybody have time to do that? I know that we're looking at the two right people to be there. And I totally support them being open. I'll take us back to when the downtown theater was not, uh, was struggling, let's say. Great talent, but struggling. What did we do? We promised to give them about a million dollars over 10 years and to pay for things that we weren't paying for. And now, as we heard tonight, our partnership has made for a strong downtown theater. And we want the rest of downtown theater. But what do we need to do? We need to invest. A hundred thousand dollars ain't nothing when you're talking about a whole downtown. So I really would like to see them stay in, in office, stay in their position, not office, in their position, and make sure with somebody, we give them more money. I don't know what that looks like, but we should look at it and see what it is. And on top, just like we did for the theater, and then on top of it, um, have somebody like the city manager was just talking about, who works inside the city and employee whose job is to work not only with the downtown, but also North Texas. We need the whole thing over there too. And it's, it's one long Texas street, as we all know. We can start in downtown. You don't throw out two women who have done great work. We, we, we saw. We saw people stand up there tonight and testify. Are there disappointments? You're darn right. And let's not forget for a year, we haven't been able to do much down there. You know, it's, it's just, it's just unbelievable to me that we're doing this right now at a time when we're trying to figure out how to keep people safe. And we're talking about two dedicated people who've not only just done this year, they, they are citizens here who've done a lot for the city beyond this. We can do better with our communication. We can do better with supporting them so they can support our businesses and get them all involved. They want to be the businesses do. They have a right to come up here and tell us, this is wrong. They have a, a right to do that. And I'm listening to them and I hear them. So we better fix it. And the way we fix it, I think going forward is to keep them in place. They're a good nonprofit. They have support and we need to support them better with very specific things again, with more money, just like we did with the theater, and with somebody, a staff person who's dedicated, not full-time of course, because that's, that's a large expense, but inside our Parks and Recreation who looks at those things like our great city manager just said. So that's where I'm standing right now. And I'm ready to listen to whatever else my colleagues have to say.
Madam Vice Mayor. Ma'am, are you with us? Councilmember Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you. You know, this is not you against Margaret or Margaret against you or the city. Margaret's done great work. The Main Street Association has done great work. This is where do you want to go? How do you want to get there? But David, I have, I have a question for you and Pastor Art brought it up. Let's talk economics. We haven't talked any figure. So with the, what is it, PBIA funds? Tell me where those funds come from. Tell me how they changed over the last 10 years, if they've changed. And who pays? Who pays for it?
The PBIA is a tax. Um, so back in 1971, there was an ordinance adopted that placed a tax that's collected through business licenses. So when, whenever a business within the boundaries of the PBIA submit for their business license, then there's an additional tax assessment that's placed on that. Uh, over the last 10 years, um, let me just get the numbers, I don't state it inaccurately. Um, over the last 10 years, uh, those revenues have stayed fairly consistently at about thirty thousand dollars per year. There's been some fluctuation up and down. But for the last three years, for example, uh, it's been around, it's been right about thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, and then so far this year, um, the numbers, uh, I had staff pull that the number would be, um, as of right now, thirty thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay, and that's paid for as an additional tax to the businesses in that area, correct?
Correct.
All right. We listen to, we need to keep you, we need to change, we need to help you grow. COVID probably, well, COVID did hurt every business downtown. COVID is going to continue to hurt every business downtown. And, and somebody said, you know, why, why should we change? We, you're a contractor, it's taken 10 years. And, and we keep our agreements with contractors and as a city, we don't. We always, we look for the, obviously a very good price, but we demand good service. And I'm not saying that Margaret hasn't given good service. I'm not saying that at all. I like Margaret. Margaret knows where, where I stand on this because she and I had a long conversation about it. But when somebody said, why change? Is now the time to change? You're in COVID. You're absolutely in COVID. We're going to be in COVID, I, I'm guessing until the middle of next year. How much, David? How much is the budget for the Main Street? Do you have those numbers?
Uh, you mean their total budget or what the two contracts?
How much do we pay?
So, um, the PBIA, all the PBIA revenues are through the administration contract. And then we pay sixty thousand through the promotions contract for the current year. Let me confirm that. Last year, 2019, um, we paid eighty thousand. There was an additional twenty thousand dollar allotment that was provided by the city to help fund some shortfalls that the association had. Uh, and in response, or as a result of that extra twenty, they were to give us a five-year plan for greater fiscal sustainability. So for this next year, for 2021, if we maintain those contracts, it would be sixty thousand for the promotions, which is the events and, and holiday promotions and whatever the PBIA revenue is for administration of the Main Street.
So probably eighty, eighty-five thousand?
Call it ninety thousand.
Ninety thousand?
Correct.
You bring this inside, what are our costs? I mean ballpark, well, no, nobody, and you already said, we're going to keep the parade and the Christmas tree lighting, tomato festival. The heart of what Main Street has done and done very well. What do you estimate it would cost the city to pay that? Because we're going to use our staff time and it's inside, correct?
Yeah. I mean, the, the hard costs for the events, um, and let me get you specifically the cost for like tomato festival, for example. Um, the, the total expense on the tomato festival is right around sixty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, so that, that's around sixty thousand dollars with that being the most profitable, uh, uh, event that's done with, I want to make sure I'm getting my numbers right. With a lot coming in sponsorships as well as, so about fifty thousand dollars coming in sponsorships and vendor fees to participate in that event. Um, overall, that event is, is one that makes the Main Street Association about forty-seven. Uh, as, as Ms. Manzo pointed out, um, there is no staff cost accounted for in that. Um, all of that staff cost is like the administration of the PBIA, uh, which each year, um, posts a, a loss, but it's, you know, it's, it's not really comparing apples to apples, right? I mean, they're, they're, they're putting all of their administrative costs under, under one accounting and then accounting for their events separately. Um, and their total expenses in this last year, 2019, which was the last full year, um, was, was right about a hundred and forty-eight thousand, a hundred and forty-nine thousand for, um, total administrative expenses. Um, and all of the details that go into that, I don't necessarily have, you know, the, the dive down into what every single expense is there.
Right, so in deference to what Margaret was just talking about, when it doesn't include staff expenses, overtime for police, fire, public works, we bill that in?
No, that is something that the city, um, assumes right now, those costs.
We just absorb it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor. Your comments, please. Well, he must have lost her. I think it's very difficult in a situation like this to take a look at the history in retrospect of the Downtown Association and what has happened during the years. The Main Street Association represents part of our history in Fairfield that is extraordinary. There is, as you heard this evening, there is considerable buy-in from a variety of people and organizations who have invested and would continue to invest in what we're attempting to do. But I'm a realist. And the realist tells me that sometimes you have to make a change, whether you like it or not. It's difficult to continue to operate when things are not as productive as they might have been some time before. The human effort that has gone into the Main Street Association and some of those signature events are truly remarkable. And the most recent one, of course, was on Veterans Day, and that was the flag burning ceremony at Courtyard of the Downtown Theater. That was pretty impressive. Impressive because of the adult leaders who were willing to take their scouts and introduce them to something that is so very, very important in our American culture. I was really impressed with that. And it was cold, but they were there. And that was done because of Margaret Manzo and her reaching out to. And the scouts, by the way, were for the most part, they were from Sassoon City. But nevertheless, what an incredible experience it was for them. And I look back in retrospect very fondly. Every time we had a new commander at Travis Air Force Base, if it was during the time of the tomato festival or the tree lighting ceremony, or all the other activities that went on, it was fun to have, invite that commander and family to ride in the fire truck, to come downtown and to, to enjoy something like that. Those memories for some of those folks are quite significant. And in his presentation this evening, Mark Lilis was talking about a four-star general, Mary Ann Miller. General Miller also had the same experience. And when we met with her two months ago about her transition, she talked about one of the things about all the assignments that she's had, wherever the Air Force had sent her. There were some of the events in Fairfield that were very significant to her. And she reminded me that that's why she bought a house over here in Rolling Hills. Those are the things that you want to remember. And Pastor Art Zachar and members of his congregation doing the puppet shows during the farmer's market. Those memories are really very, very significant. So for me, it's a difficult decision to end something that perhaps may have already run its course. But nevertheless, it's a part of our history. It's an important part of our history. And when you talk to people who are buying homes in Fairfield rather than going somewhere else, every once in a while, somebody will say, well, it's because of Sassoon Valley or it's because you've got the downtown theater or it's the farmer's market. Everybody loved the Fourth of July Parade. And all those organizations were around the Bay Area. And that's a major undertaking. So I'm a bit ambivalent about wanting to make a change. Maybe the change should be delayed a while. Perhaps we should give it one more year and give it an opportunity to turn itself around. But that would be my suggestion.
Mr. Mayor, would, would you, would you consider, um, perhaps, uh, giving them another year, but also giving them maybe some more money? Maybe we could ask staff to come back to us with that, like we did with the theater. But, you know, I don't know a number. But to help them, um, and also to have some kind of a, a contact person that they'll work with in the city. So we can bring those businesses in who came and they really, they really do want to be involved. We need to involve them. This is how we win. Um, I support you in wanting to give them a year.
Yeah, I would, I would be receptive to that. But one of the other elements of the Main Street Association is the cultural diversity that manifests itself in almost every activity that occurs with the Downtown Association. Councilman Tim, please.
Yeah, thank you. You know, we talk about the cultural diversity. This is not where we fire Margaret and then the city drops the ball. I get it when you want to give them one more year and then Ms. Moy talks about giving them money. And this is taxpayer money. And it's also money that will put a tax on the businesses there that are there now. The PBIA. Right? So we're saying people here want to keep them, people here don't want to keep them. But if we do this, then your business tax is going to go up. And it's easy sometimes not to make a decision, and I'm certainly not criticizing you nor, nor Ms. Moy or anybody else. But when you look at a vision, we've hired the city manager, he's hired the assistant city manager. We are trying to change things. Not that they've done anything wrong, and I can't over, I can't overstate that. You haven't done anything wrong. You got us here. Kind of like going from maybe JV to varsity. And I don't mean to be, uh, I'm not trying to make light of it. But I don't know how much farther the Main Street, based on the way it is today, can continue us forward. We're going to spend thirty million dollars part of Fairfield Plan. And I'll be old and gray or maybe even gone by the time it's done. But it's starting. Look at, we've, the, the long discussion we had tonight on the houses at Samyato. And I asked the question, risk reward. Where do we want to be on that, on that square? How much control we have, will we have over it? Because what I don't want to see happen is Margaret says, well, you're not really going to give me much more money and you want this and this. That, that's not fair to her because then you're absolutely right. Then we set them up to fail. But are we as a city looking forward to putting on parades and tomato festivals? Or is our goal to make downtown Fairfield a thriving business where business owners make money and part of the enticement? I'm like a barker at a carnival. Come down because we're going to have a tomato festival. Absolutely great to learn to cut tomatoes there. But I think our goal is the citizens want to go down there because, wow, look what, how much private business puts into the coffers of the city of Fairfield. And for me, that's the bottom line as a, as a policy leader. And we're responsible not for just the businesses downtown, but for all the citizens and all the businesses. So if we, I don't want to give them a year. We, my choice would be is we vote tonight to either say yes or say no. Because if, and if we say no and they're gone, then the city's got the ball and they're running. If we say yes, then we figure out a way to make them successful. So in a year, we're not back here doing the same thing where business is, like I said, they've got one, one foot on a banana peel and the other in bankruptcy because COVID's not going away. I mean, it's just, it's not. So yes or no, but I would not, I'm not looking just to put the decision off for a year. I don't think that's fair to us and it's certainly not fair to them and it's not fair to the rest of the businesses. So that's, that's my. So that's my take. Thank you, Mayor.
I hear you. I hear you, and I, you know, I don't disagree that we should just say yes tonight to them, no to having them go, and then figure out how we make it better. We have city staff that knows that. And we set the policy, as you know, you know this all really well. I'll just take this back to the theater again. We had, you know, a thing going on, and we invested a butt-load of money over there, and it's chewing great. It's only one part of down there. But we are not going to stop doing economic development. There are a lot of moving parts down there. I don't think we should have city staff also do this part. This is like the happy part of downtown. People have to understand that there are differences. If they're upset about economic development, they'd need to come and call me and kick my butt around a little bit so the city gets aligned. Not this group. This is a nonprofit. That's what they do. They don't do all these other things. They don't get the chewing gum off the sidewalk, okay? I mean, so, you know, I'm just going to go ahead and make the motion that we say no to kicking them out.
Um, hold, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment, please? Hello? Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Go ahead, make your comment, please.
Yeah, thank you, okay. You know, I know there were a lot of people, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Kat, but I know there were a lot of people tonight in support of Margaret Manzo and the crew. But there were also people that didn't feel represented tonight, and that's what stuck with me. Okay, when you have people downtown that own businesses that don't feel represented, that don't feel part of an organization, that bothered me. And, you know, sometimes when you have a situation where, you know, this, you know, people are either yea or nay on a vote or, you know, on should they stay or should they go, the thing that stuck with me is there were a few people tonight that were really felt pretty passionate about not being and not feeling included. And I can't stop, you know, that just bothers me flat out. So, you know, my thing is, okay, if the vote goes the other way, I would expect the Main Street Association to reach out to those people. And if they don't, then they shouldn't be there. I mean, that's my feeling. And that really bothered, yeah, it just bothered me, period. So that's, that's all I really wanted to say, Mayor. So, you know, I don't know, I guess there's a motion on the floor.
We need a second for that motion. Yeah, restate the motion, please. Councilwoman Moy.
Yes, my motion is just simply to deny what staff has asked us to do today and that then we will set the parameters, which includes, yes, reaching out to those people. Nobody should feel left out at all, nobody, for any reason. They pay some of this. I agree with you, Rich. That bothered me a lot, too, okay? A lot. Because my family had been left out of a lot of things because they didn't speak English, okay? So I'm just, I agree with you. And so my motion is just simply that, just to say no to the staff recommendation. And then we can move on from there with whatever we all want to do.
And I will second that motion. Time to vote, folks. All in favors?
We need a roll call, so Karen, you need to...
Yes.
Well, did someone second the motion?
Say what's second.
Oh, I didn't get who.
The mayor seconded.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, roll call. Councilmember Moy?
Yes.
Councilmember Tim?
No.
Councilmember Vicarall?
No.
Vice Mayor Bertani? No longer with us. Mayor Price?
Yes. Daleme.
Yeah, we're, because that could be enough for either side on this one here. It's going to be two-two, so you probably need to come back with further consideration.
Yep. Can you put it on our next agenda on December 1st? And hope that we have a full council.
Mr. City Attorney, if there's no yes, though, doesn't that mean that it just turned away?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman Moy, I couldn't quite hear the question that you asked. Could you repeat it, please?
I'm sorry, since it was just a two-two split, doesn't that mean the motion doesn't carry, but neither does the item?
That is correct. There's no, the effect of this, there's no action tonight.
Right.
So that's where we are. So that's why we suggested this come back the next meeting for, be reviewed and considered again.
Okay.
There's no other business before this? Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Comment?
Sorry. Jeff Trager is our first public comment speaker, then to be followed by Linda Elkins. And third will be Cornelius Wood. Not right now, sir. No, you, yes. He started to get up, sorry.
Sorry, you kept me waiting all evening.
It's okay. I have positive things to say.
Yay.
This, I know it's been an interesting year. I've had to cancel all my shows at the Downtown Theater. I'm not the only one that's suffering out there. But I'd like to say that I've got a little creative. I'm doing live streaming shows at the Downtown Theater. We've had three very successful shows. And then last Saturday night, we had Lenny Williams. You know who Lenny Williams is, from Fairfield, lead singer for Tower Power, one of the great soul singers in this country. Ranks up there with Sam Cooke, Teddy Pendergrass. And he absolutely killed it. We had almost 20,000 people across this country that watched it. We had 120,000 people that came to our site, which is incredible. And everyone that came to the site saw where this show was being broadcast from. Okay, so that's a real, real wonderful thing that happened. Coming up, we have Roy Rogers and Carlos Reyes on the 5th of next December. And then we have a very, very special show. We have Sheila E. coming on the 18th of December with the Esquivido family. I'll go back to Carlos, excuse me, the Lenny Williams was so successful that we're going to rebroadcast it on New Year's Eve. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. And they are, there will be other shows. We'll have Confunction on Valentine's Day. Last time they played the Downtown Theater was two sold-out shows. So I hope that I brought some positive things. And there'll be other shows also included, so thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Next, Linda Elkins. Linda, are you still here? No? Okay, Cornelius Wood, sorry.
Price, fellow counsel, council members and fellow Fairfield resident. I'm going to say something that's along with a, you might have heard from somebody else before, recently. This is not my first rodeo. I've spoken to you before, particularly about this subject that I'm going to raise. And that's the terrible communications that you're doing with these meetings. It is absolutely atrocious that you should have a council member who checked in before not be there for a final vote when you end up with a two-to-two thing. That, that's being said, there's no reason why that whatever occurred here this evening should not have been broadcast to everybody that was watching. But evidently, it wasn't getting there because the same council member asked us, what happened there this evening? They should know, the public should know. And the presentation of various things, when they're at home, we should be seeing them on a screen, just like today. Mr. Zuckerberg and Guy Debman, I think, they both testified before Congress. And all the while they were speaking, you could see them on the screen. You could even tell they were from home because you could see the dishes behind them. And they're trying to keep technology out there. We should be using something like that to make this thing happen. Okay, Ms. Moy said this a little while ago. You know, $100,000, pocket change is where you guys go. I'm not for spending a lot of money, but as far as keeping the government, the people informed about what's going on, it is pocket change. You should be really looking into getting a better thing on keeping the public informed about our council meeting. And I know you're going to say, when the city council chambers is done, it'll be better. That, too, like the train, the downtown, I'm still waiting for. The Downtown Association type thing, not the association, but the heart of Fairfield. I, too, am still waiting for it. I'm going to close with a little bit of a zinger to you guys. If you want Texas Street downtown to be in great shape, you got to quit building train stations out by Vanden Road for the high-end commuters and housing developments. Thank you, folks. I hope you get it better.
Are there any other public comment speakers? Because I think the ones I have here are no longer here. Okay, thank you.
We are adjourned until our next meeting at 6:00 PM here on December 1st. Thank you very much.